I'd like to call the April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three Smithfield Town Council Committees to Order, it being three o'clock, let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. I know we have some folks dialing in remotely pursuant to the ordinance that allows that. Ms. King, who would be calling in?
Valerie Butler is our only guest.
Okay. Vice Mayor Butler, you there?
Yes, I am.
Great, good to have you with us. Mr. Stilings, you with us? Mr. Stilings?
I don't have him on.
Okay, all right, what we'll do is we'll continue. The first thing I'd like to do, I know there's some folks in the public that wish to be heard, public comments, we did not have a sign up sheet. Who wishes to be heard at public comments, make any public comments at this time? Mr. Barlow?
Yes, sir.
Can you come forward to the microphone, please? State your name and address, please.
Here.
Yes, sir, please.
Randolph Barlow, lifelong resident of Smithfield.
Thank you, good to have you here, sir.
Thank you, sir. Nice for y'all to invite me, at least hear me. I'm here in support of the Waterworks Dam. One of the reasons I am is ecological. From when I was a teenager, and that was years ago, I've lived on property that's bordered that lake all my life. From what it was when I was a teenager, in sixty years, it has filled in now over eight-hundred yards approximately. That is all sediment runoff from farmers' fields, because there's very little development in that area. And what people don't realize, that that lake drains, it's a twenty-six point-two acre lake was, and it drains fifteen, approximately fifteen hundred and thirty-five acres. That's a lot of territory with chemicals, sediment, and everything ended up in that waterway. Without the dam, those sediments will go to the Pagan River, James River, Chesapeake Bay, and kind of whatever affluence along with agriculture chemicals, so forth, so on. This is, it's been there the best of my digging. That dam has been there over two-hundred years. And I stand to be corrected, the only time it has been breached was in two thousand and six. And not being an engineer, I can fix that dam, I feel very confident. Put another six-foot emergency spillway in which can accommodate it, and at a reasonable price, and the problem be solved. That's relevant, I've got some, I didn't bring enough. The schematic, it's a map, if anybody wants to see the lake.
Why don't you submit one for the record that we can keep?
Okay, I'll submit one for the record, passes others, and I apologize for not-
It's okay.
-bringing more. But as y'all get the map, when I was, if you look on the left, you'll see a Ravenwood Road. That is where my house is now. A driveway just above that is where I was raised. My brother lives there. And if you go over to see the M. in Mount Holly, when I was a teenager, that's where the lake was. It stopped at that point. Where it's stopping now is down about the O. and Holly. So in sixty years, it's filled in that much. And if my records are correct, hundred and forty years prior to that, it's filled in a whole lot more, prior to me being born.
Got a couple more minutes, if you would.
Okay. But I just want to put that in for feel for thought as to why it should not be taken out.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you all for listening to me.
Yes, sir, our pleasure. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir? Bailey, how are you, sir?
Just fine.
Good. You state your name for the record, please.
Roger Ely.
And your rent-
One-five-three-six-two, Mount Holly Creek Lane.
Good to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Just one statement, while the state, the dam truly wasn't breached during that hundred-year flood. It overflowed, but it didn't breach the dam. And the dam's been there a good two-hundred years. And in that same event, it took out two state bridges. One at the border between Surrey and Isle of Wight, and another one in Chukatah. You just can't engineer it for a hundred-year event. It doesn't happen. And I think they're probably pushing the bounds of what needs to be done with that dam. And if it did breach, it's a mile and a half of nothing but marshland and thirty-foot banks that gets to the end of Mount Holly and joins the pavement. So no effect to anybody if that dam were to breach. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ely.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Ralph Caldwell, I live at eleven-three-five-five Wood Creek Lane. The property that I own is on Wood Creek Lane, which is on off of Mount Holly Creek. If this dam had any issues at all, or its environmental side, everybody ought to consider it these days. I think, again, we're looking at, as Mr. Barlow had stated, there's a lot of sediment that goes into that lake, but it serves as a lot of wildlife and habitat that no, I don't think you could ever replace. Like I said, the property that I own, if it breached, it would come behind my house, which is part of Mount Holly Creek. I just wanted to say that I was going to try to make sure that you get folks to understand what an amenity that really is to this county and to this town. A lot of people use it for recreation, you may not recognize that, but they really do. And I appreciate you hearing from me.
Thank you, sir, good to have you here. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Harris, I live at three-two-nine Gray Street. I wanted just to talk a little bit about the roadway again. I know this is something that you hear me talk about often. I'm not sure where we go with this, because we don't get a lot of feedback as to any plans that are happening downtown to mitigate some of the issues with the traffic and the speeding, which is really my biggest concern. I know that the replacement or correction of Gray Street is coming up, and it seems to me that would be a great time for these discussions to be occurring on what should be done to slow the traffic down. We've asked for several things, stop signs were one thing that was discussed and actually supported. But Saturday night, I was out, took my dog out, it was eight-thirty, and we had a car blast down the middle of the street, I talked to Jeff a little bit about this. At probably fifty or fifty-five, he straddled the yellow line right straight down our roadway. That's a concern to me. I know we can't put someone there all the time, but I don't know what we do about that. I've lived on that street for thirty-one, thirty-one years, coming up in October, and I've seen an increase of the speed and the number of speeders, certainly, over the years. We have a lot of small children, we've had a turnover in our neighborhood of younger families moving in. We have a lot of people with pets. It's a residential street. Our speed limit, we talk about all the time, is twenty-five. And then I'm told, and it hasn't been recent, I will say that, that, well, we can enforce it until they speed so much, because it'll get thrown out of court. So effectively, our speed limit's like thirty-five, in my mind, which is not acceptable. So I don't know where those discussions began, so my comment here today was not a formal one, but just a request that we start looking at this seriously while we're doing roadwork and things like that, because it seems to be an ideal time to start addressing this. And if we can get VDOT to allow for the signage to go up, they had no objection when my husband spoke to them earlier in the year, and the town council, actually Randy, I don't know where he is, he's not here right now, supported that stop sign idea. So anyway, I'm just here to say, I think it's a good time to have those discussions. I'm sure you could get many on Gray Street to sit down and talk to you about that and what they'd like to see. I know it's been a, there are people who would like to come to this kind of a meeting where they can speak, but they're working. You know, it's kind of a difficult time to get off work at three o'clock in the afternoon and talk about how their kids play on our street, and they work. I'm a retired person, so that makes it a little easier for me to do that, anyway. So I just want that consideration done, as we at least address somewhat. I mean, otherwise, I'll be back and keep talking about it till I get somebody to at least listen or tell me an answer to what we're gonna do. Anyway, I appreciate you listening, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Mayor, I can't remember where I've been-
Ms. Rafferty.
I've been reading a lot in the last few days, because I was out of town last week, and I can't remember where I read it, but there was some discussion about speed bumps on Gray Street, but that wasn't a possibility, because it's an alternate for a highway or something? Am I remembering that correctly? I think, Mr. Riddick, you had that comment.
Yeah, it's, Gray Street is alternate right of two-fifty-eight. It's, it's not, it's not a, the town does not set the speed limit on Main Street, Gray Street, South Church Street, because they are, South Church Street is alternate, Business Route ten. So we, anything that's done on those three streets has to be sanctioned by VDOT. And also, Mill Swamp, not Mill, what's that, Kerry Street?
Mill Swamp?
Well, it turns into Kerry, Kerry turning into Mill Swamp, that's, that's the other one. Those are all sanctioned and controlled by VDOT, you have to get, and they don't allow, and Wayne, is Wayne here? He's there.
He's a front.
No, no speed bumps on VDOT roads, correct? I mean, that's, it never has been, and they won't permit it.
They're considered primary, they're considered-
Huh?
They're considered primary streets.
Primary streets? Okay.
So what would it take to get the speed limit reduced on that road? One of those traffic studies, and then it has to be eighty-fifth percentile of something?
Well, they're, they're not gonna reduce it, maybe to twenty-five.
No, I know, that's what I'm trying to say. It's gonna be impossible, because it has to be, I mean, Wayne can tell us, but eighty-fifth percentile of everyone that's speeding down that road right now, it has to meet that threshold to decrease it, because I dealt with this when we were looking at trying to have more golf cart, you know, usage downtown, and that's what VDOT said. But then I also read somewhere where Mr. Smith from Smithfield Foods indicated he was willing to talk to all the team members at Smithfield about not driving on Gray Street to get to in front of the plant.
That was, that was in his letter of support for the Grange Project.
Okay, again, I, sorry, I couldn't remember where I read it, but, so, I mean, is that the preferred method of getting to the plant, is-
Well, you can do that.
Around town?
We've, I've had some discussions with, with Mr. Hall, Mark Hall, that that's also something that we need to discuss at the advent of the bridge repairs, to try to lower the congestion there as well. So that, that discussion is to be had as well, so. But back to Mr. Riddick's point, I put my former state trooper hat on, it's in the code of Virginia, specifically the law, it, it tells you what speed limits are supposed to be at certain locations, and that area, twenty-five, I think is still, if you look at the law, it would say that it's a residential area, and residential areas are twenty-five mile an hour zones. That's the same thing that we contended with when they changed the speed limits on Moonfield Drive, John Roth, John Roth Drive, and those that were, at thirty, we were pretty much required by law to reduce it down to twenty-five, because they're residential areas. It tells you what a residential area is, but lower than that, VDOT would have to come up with some decision to do it, but I, I don't, I really don't.
So how can VDOT say something is a residential area and it's an alternate for a highway? How can it be both?
It was, it was, it was, it's been that way ever since it's been built. I mean, it's been, you know, it goes back seventy-five, eighty years. I mean, it's not like something that's happened, this is, they were the major thoroughfares into, into the town, when the town was very small and compact, and it hasn't changed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've got a, I've got some conflicting information, and I'm not sure if it was Mrs. Harris's husband, or if it was Tommy that lives on Kerry. One of those folks actually contacted VDOT, and they said, "That is not a VDOT road right there."
Which one?
Kerry, where it turns into Mill Swamp.
Okay.
Now, I have not verified that, that was just information that I was given.
We're doing, we're doing a speed study on that. What it is, I think, Kerry Street is, is, is town sanctioned until you get to the town limits, I believe, for whatever reason, VDOT did that. I may be wrong.
Okay.
That's why we're doing the speed study now, that I've been informed, that we're about eighty percent finished as far as the speed study is concerned, we just haven't done the numbers.
Okay.
But that one specific area that we have at thirty miles an hour-
Right.
-is, can be adjusted through that area.
That's changed now.
Yeah, I think it has.
But the thing that Mr. Gang was talking about was, and I think you may spoke up about that, VDOT had some concern about dropping the speed limit so quickly from fifty-five, forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, over less than a mile.
Right.
I think that was something that had to do with it.
We're looking at it, the chief is in the process of doing a traffic study through that area, and in concert with that, I know the chief will be getting Mr. Riddick with you and with VDOT, with Wayne or whatever, to determine that if we make any adjustment, there'll be lawful adjustments, and we'll go from there. But, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Yep. Right. Mr. Riddick, go.
No, I was just gonna say, just, just parenthetically, you know, we've been trying to reduce the speed limit on the bridge for years, to, from down, going from thirty-five to twenty-five on the bridge, and we can't do it.
Right.
I mean, we've been, we've tried and tried and tried and tried, and VDOT says no.
Are those little kids' signs legal to have? I know somebody in my neighborhood in Cypress Creek has one, says kids are playing, it has a flag. Like, could an individual do one of those?
They're technically not legal, Wayne can correct me, they're technically not legal if they're in the right-of-way owned by the town of Smithfield. You're not allowed to put anything there that's not permitted.
It's in the bike lane.
But that being, but that being said-
No.
-the police don't, that, that's something that's really bad policing, if you go and tell somebody to take that sign, unless they have a complaint, unless it's obstructing this, we've got them over in my neighborhood as well, and in fact, I've got one kind of ditch in my driveway, because my next-door neighbor's decided that, that they wanted to ride their bicycles down my blacktop driveway. So, you know, it, it's one of those things where the devil's in the details, but technically, Wayne, correct me, you can't put anything in a right-of-way, period, if it's a town-owned right-of-way, unless you have the permission of the town, and then it has to be certain, meet certain parameters, certain collision parameters, certain this, certain that, but a little plastic sign like that is like-
Yeah, so like, we've struggled with that in Cypress Creek as well, right? Because so many homes being built, and the contractors and builders, and, I mean, we've gone from under three-hundred homes to three-hundred-and-sixty-four in a very short time. And so, you know, people with kids and that, they're putting up these little signs with the flag, it says, you know, "Don't kill my kids." So I'm just wondering if, if there's like, a list of things, because we really struggle with this, can you put a, can you put a, you know, speed monitor kind of station, even if you're not looking at the speed, to make it seem like you were? I mean, you've done this for us in Cypress Creek, probably always was measuring speed, actually, but, you know, maybe we can get our heads together and give these residents a list of things that are possible, right? I mean, some of you guys are the experts, I'm obviously not, but if there are things that they can do, just even as residents, you can't give them speed bumps, it's an alternate highway, we can't change the speed limit, what else can we offer them? I mean, if we have a list like that?
Aggressive enforcement, yes.
I'm gonna ask you about that in the committee meeting then. Okay.
Just, but you can't, you can't be, you can't be everywhere at the same time with a limited number of resource. Now, we, we have none before in your neighborhood, had complaints as far as the main drag coming through there, and we would run radar, and we have run radar, your homeowners association president would call and ask, and, you know, but he can do the best he can, what he's got to work with. But you're welcome to ask if it comes to committee.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Speaking of committees, anything else? Okay, at this time, public buildings and welfare is now in session.
All right.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, thank you, mayor. First on there, number one is Mallory Point Amendment to Proffers. Can you clarify?
Yes, thank you, good afternoon. The applicant for the Mallory Point rezoning project is requesting an amendment to the proffers. The proffer's statement dated June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one includes item five E., which states a community dock slash pier with limited parking will provide a kayak and non-motorized watercraft launch area and overlook. Motorized watercraft will not be permitted to use this community dock slash pier. The proffer's statement also includes item fourteen B. This is to construct a westbound right turn lane with a two-hundred-feet storage slash two-hundred-foot taper. During the rezoning application process and discussions, the applicant agreed to remove the community dock slash pier from the application package. It was understood by the planning commission, as well as the town council, that this rezoning application would not provide a community dock slash pier. Additionally, during the site plan review process, it was determined that a two-hundred-foot storage slash two-hundred-foot taper would create a conflict point on Battery Park Road, and instead, an eighty-five-foot storage, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot taper would better suit the right turn entrance into Phase A of Mallory Point. In accordance with Virginia Code fifteen point-two-dash-two-three-zero-two-B, and with the newly adopted Article five I-five, the applicant is seeking an amendment to the proffers, replacing item five E. with a community dock slash pier is not permitted, and replacing item fourteen B. with construct a westbound right turn lane, eighty-five feet storage, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot taper. According to Virginia Code and the Smithfield zoning ordinance, when an amendment is requested that does not affect conditions of use or density, a local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing by a majority vote at the next regularly scheduled town council meeting prior to the amendment of such proffered conditions. Town staff do support this request for an amendment to the proffers by replacing item five E. and fourteen B. in accordance with the approved rezoning application. Thank you.
Any questions?
One.
Mr. Mayor?
You'd indicated town staff supports this. Mr. Griffin, been consulted, and this all good to go, as far as you're concerned, and the right thing to do?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
So what was the reason behind not wanting a small dock for kayaks on that?
During the rezoning application process, the public comment indicated that they, they were not in favor of it, and so it, the applicants agreed to remove it from their proffer statement.
They, there was a great deal of testimony about how shallow it is, how narrow it is, how environmentally sensitive it is, and for a multitude of reasons, everyone agreed that that was not a good place to have kayak.
Okay. I did get a citizen's comment in the last thirty days about the change we made, to be able to make changes at the town council level without a public hearing. And, and that wasn't met with, well, it was met with some resistance from this particular citizen I heard from. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, we understand the issue, and that we think-
What you have to do is, at this meeting, you have to take a vote, either to have a public hearing or no public hearing. And so you can state very clearly, if you choose not to have a public hearing, the only purpose for this will be to make these two changes, and then it can be done, I think the way you've done this, I think you have to defer it for a month.
I'd just like it to be real clear in the record that we're responding to public comment, by deleting the ramp, right? Because the last thing I want is like, oh, you waived, you waived the public hearing, you deleted this ramp, and then everybody wants a ramp all of a sudden to put kayaks in, and we're really responding to them.
And y'all, was your, y'all talk about this, because you just adopted the new ordinance.
Right.
One of the conditions was that in order to do this without a public hearing, you have to, in a public meeting, state that you are going to do this without a public hearing, okay?
Like, so again, I'm okay deleting this dock slash ramp. It was for non-motorized boats, anyway, I'm just assuming it was kayak, couldn't it?
There's significant expense involved in all that. I mean, you know, if, if, if you want to have a public hearing, you can, but there, it's, you know, this is, I would call this a technical correction more than anything. It doesn't deal with density, it doesn't deal with use. It's clearly a mistake, and one of the things can't be done because of the taper, that's just a, that's physics and geometry, so, you know, those are technical issues, but you, it's your to call, if you want to have a public hearing, you can.
Not saying I'm in favor of public hearing, I just want us all to be clear that that's why we're saying that we think it's okay to waive it.
It's the first time this has ever happened, so you need to, y'all need to clearly understand it.
Mr. Riddick's saying public comment was against the ramp.
Right, yes.
Okay, so I haven't read that, but if you guys are all-
I know during, when I was listening to a lot of verbiage with Mallory Point, and a lot of people in the audience were unhappy with the boat ramp being there, and I've had several people mention that to me.
Okay.
Because it's so shallow, and it's not really feasible from a safety standpoint to do that. What's the will of the council?
So we actually have to vote to waive the public hearing?
You have to vote it, you can't vote at this meeting, you have to vote at the council meeting.
On the, okay.
Whether you're gonna have a public hearing or not. If you choose not to, that's fine, I think you, I think you can go ahead and you can make the change, but if you have, if you choose to proceed with a public hearing, it'll go to the next month, and then it'll-
Okay.
Because that has to be advertised in the newspaper.
But what we need to do here is make it, make a motion and a decision whether or not we are going to have the public hearing or not, correct?
It'd be, it's gonna be on your, it's gonna be on your agenda for you to vote one way or the other.
Correct.
Yes.
So it needs to go to consent agenda for town council.
I understand that, but today, to do it correctly, in accordance with the ordinance, this body politic has to vote as-
You can't vote, you can never-
Or make a motion.
You can't vote in committees, you-
I misunderstood, I thought you said, I knew that you couldn't do that.
No, you have to, you, the ordinance you just adopted says that at the next public, at the next regularly scheduled meeting or council, you will vote whether or not to have the public hearing.
Okay, I misunderstood.
We're just remanding it to the meeting.
It's, you just, the only thing you're doing right now is this is gonna be an agenda item.
Right.
And at that time, you'll either vote to proceed without a public hearing or with a public hearing. You have to vote affirmatively, and if you choose not to, then you can go ahead and, and vote on the technical correction.
So technically, it goes from this meeting to the next meeting, and then if we, whatever we vote, and then the vote, the actual vote is the following meeting?
I think you can, I think if you choose not to proceed with a public hearing-
You can vote at the next meeting.
You can, you can, you can go ahead and vote at-
Council meeting, May eighth.
Next week's meeting to make these corrections.
That's where I misunderstood, we need to, I think we term this meeting, this meeting meeting, the council meeting.
Lots of meetings.
Got you.
Talk about that.
So make sure, you said this is the first one, and we don't want to mess it up.
Well, no, and it's, like, it is new, and so, we've never had to do this before, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Okay, all right. Number two, Great Spring Road Project Grant Update. Zach, you read that?
Mr. Stilings is on.
Oh, he is? Okay, good. Mr. Stilings, you with us?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can you give us a Great Spring Road Project Grant Update?
Yes, sir. Uh, if you can-
I know, it's a little loud.
Tell him to start over.
Mr. Stilings?
Yes, sir.
We had a audio problem, can you start over?
Can you start over since we've got that corrected, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We were awarded that it has a litigation grant from FEMA for the Great Spring Road project. The grant is a 90% award with a 10% match, and the state is in the process of getting approved, so if the votes could be down, if it became, if in the next couple of months, they anticipate the state approval will provide a 10% match. In order to get the project moving, the town can go ahead and commit that 10% with the anticipation that you get the reimbursement from the state once it's finally approved at that level by going ahead and committing that 10% now, and lets us get the project rolling. We are waiting on a proposal from Summit Design to put the grant package together for us to help with the Hywood project. They will be giving us a proposal to move management of the grant, and that would involve the communication residents and ensuring that everything is taken care of and are great. But what we will be looking for at the council meeting is that council will accept the order and commit to the match, which is approximately $92,000, that they would be reimbursed with the state, so ultimately, we will not have any expenses outside of consulting fees from Summit Design, if this would at least let us get the project moving.
Does anyone have any question?
When is the money needed to, to first match?
Yes, sir.
When's the money needed to to be matched?
The amount is, in the package, is approximately $92,000, and the anticipation is that the state would actually be providing those funds. They just have not gone through the final approval process, which we anticipate in the next couple of months. But if we commit to the funds now, we can get the project moving, and then the state can reimburse us for any expenses we have up to that match percentage.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stallings, I know this is a loaded question, but what, with what reasonable certainty do you believe that those, that matched money will be reimbursed by the Commonwealth?
I understand that question, and I feel very confident that he will receive those funds, it just has to go through there, and all the process.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mayor.
So I'm looking, uh, Michael, it's Renee, I'm looking at the, uh, project description, I guess it's Attachment A, uh, and and I know that there will be certain dollars awarded to us under this grant, and I'm very, very thankful for your efforts on this, and I'm very pleased that it's gone this far. Um, all that to say, the amounts that are outlined here as the subtotals for the purchase of the properties, what do those amounts represent? Is that fair market value, assessed value? How did they come up with the amounts for each of the the five properties?
My understanding is that it was based off of a fair market value assessment that the consultants did in time of needing the grant application.
So then let's say that we enter in an agreement with FEMA and then the state for the resulting 10%, and, uh, you know, one of these homes, the the people say it's going to be $200,000. I guess I'm looking at Mr. Riddick, too. And what if they won't accept this amount?
Yeah, I guess at some point, if we can't reach an agreement with one of those homeowners, then we would not be able to do the relocation for that residence.
Yeah.
If somebody elects not to participate, I don't know that we have the ability to force them to, unless council would want to go down and pass a con- condemnation, but I'm not sure that we can force somebody to participate if they did not want to.
I don't think you can force them to, but-
At the time, all of the residents were on board. One of the homes has changed ownership since then, but everybody else is still the same resident and still on board with the project.
Well, like, on board and a specific dollar amount or two different things, but-
My understanding is that the consultants discussed those dollar amounts with the homeowners and the town to put the application together.
Okay. Uh, I think Valerie wants to talk to us. Mr. Stallings, can you, uh-
Um, am I on, to be able to-
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
Um, I piggyback on what Renee asked. I know Michael has been in communication with the homeowners. Um, my concern is, it's been individual communication. Um, and it's not a community, but it does in my own five families. I think that they need to, we need to have a meeting together with them to make sure that they understand how this process is going to work, and I I guess approximately how much they're going to be awarded. I I don't think that that's going to be accomplished individually. I think as a group, we need to have a meeting with them.
I agree.
Yes, if we were to now take one of the tasks that the consultant group can take on, they would do the work, but I understand, and we need that, so if we by all means have the permission, we need to do all of the residents, we need to take the process to move forward.
Mr. Hall, I just don't want us to be in a situation that we accept and enter into a, you know, a grant situation with FEMA and the ensuing Virginia State match, and then we go to these residents, and then they say, well, this isn't okay with me. And I'm, I don't want to condemn properties, I want them to be safe, I want everybody to win. I just am wondering the mechanics of how this is going to play out, and what our responsibility to FEMA would then be if we accepted the grant. Mr. Riddick has a comment?
Agree, Mr. Stall.
If we accepted it, and for some reason, somebody backs out, then we can stop, but when we submitted the application initially, everybody was on board to discuss with what the project was, so everybody that is on that list for potential purchase had agreed to the project.
The simple thing to do is to just go ahead and prepare very simple contracts that says the town will purchase your property at these prices, subject to receipt of an award of this grant, and get everybody to sign them. And if they don't, that's problematic, because I think individually, they have all at one time or the other come here and said, please help us.
Right.
And so, please help us doesn't mean please make us, I think it says make us whole, it doesn't say buy it a profit.
Right.
And that's an easy thing to do. I mean, we can have contracts that we can present to them very quickly for these prices, and it says, because we don't care whether there's termites, structural damage, any of those things, because the the normal home purchaser would care about, because the town's going to tear them down anyhow. So it's nothing more than acquiring those properties at these prices, subject to receipt of an award of this grant, and that can be done immediately, and y'all can, next Tuesday night, approve those, the extension of those five contracts at those prices, and we can make those offers to the property owners, and then you'll know something within a week.
Yeah, just, let's say four out of the five, it, just for being the devil's advocate, four out of the five people decide that they want to do it. One says no. Can we still proceed with the four under, under this scenario? And the, and the other, the answer is yes?
Yes, every indication I had is that we can still have a proceed.
And and that one person at that juncture that backs out and doesn't want to do it, it's, it's almost like a reverse caveat emptor. They've, they have been forewarned, they have been afforded the opportunity to be, have it purchased at that price, and then the deal's up. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Because you don't have to make them a deal anyhow.
I know, I know.
You have no obligation to do this. This is a, it was an important thing for you to do. Ms. Butler's been very active about this.
Yep.
It's something, and and Michael's done a wonderful job of finding this money. So here's, here's the life preserver.
Well, the, my, my, my concern, I, w- once this is done, and once this offer is made to those five property owners, and one should back out, and we have one of those storms again, they need to understand that they don't come back to the town and say, you know, I wish I'd taken the money, what can you do for me? That needs to be made plain and clear to all of them during the course of this transaction that, that, as you said, Ms. Butler's done a yeoman's job, uh, working with them, Mr. Stallings has done a marvelous job finding the money, but once we, once we consummate this deal, that's, that's the end of the line. That's the line in the sand. That's my biggest concern.
It's, it's, it's a one opportunity only-
That's, I just need to make sure of that.
Thank you. Good for you, sir. All right. Thank you, Mr. Stallings.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Oh, wait, did we just direct him to do that, then? What Mr. Riddick just said of the five contract?
I think what you need to do is on, on your agenda for Tuesday night, there should, if you're so inclined, make a motion to extend offers to the five property owners for these prices, subject to receipt of the grant.
Okay.
And that'll, for the record, will be Monday, be Monday week.
If the county action to accept the grant and authorize me to sign it, and if we would move forward with the process-
Yeah, that, too.
Then that would be at the council meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
Um, in the, uh, communication we got from Mr. Stallings, his last sentence says, I recommend that town council, town council authorize the town manager to execute the grant award package, and that the town agree to commit the required $92,000 match to get the project moving. I think that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah.
So the next town council meeting, we'll address it and move on with it.
Move this on to the consent agenda, because that would, thank you.
Well, that, and then, if you want to go a step farther, authorize the offers to the five property owners for those prices.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, Valerie?
Uh, I'm sorry, I can't drive and look, too. Um, but the main question was the value of the properties. Michael, are you sure that that was calculated on fair market value?
That was my understanding, it's quite possible that some of those numbers may have changed just given the time, like, that has happened, but my understanding is that's where they came from.
It, it's, I just love-
Did they get, did they give us a worksheet?
I can go back, I'm sure I have that, they, once we did not get the brick award, all of the documents were part of that grant application that submitted for this award, so I can go back because I have all of that in my box.
Ms. Bob, Ms. Bob.
But that property, that, that, and that, that, that dollar amount, that does concern me, and that brick, brick award request was several years ago. I just want to make sure that they're getting fair market value, and they have the opportunity to relocate, and it doesn't put them in an adverse situation.
Ms. Bob, I just looked at the tax values, and the o- the offers are significantly more than the tax assessments.
Did you hear that, Valerie?
For example, the, on sec, on 210, that's the tax assessment.
Okay, I, I missed that part of the compensation bill, but that's my only concern. So as long as we feel comfortable that the fair market values are there, I'm okay with it. I just don't want to put them in a negative situation, and the real estate market over the past few years has changed extensively.
Well, just for example, I just looked up one of them, 210 on Great Spring Road is assessed at 148.9, and the offer is 182.340. So it's not tax value, it's clearly fair, it's, it's clearly a fair market value.
If I may also-
They can't, they can't buy anything in Smithfield, and I won't make counting for that state, that part, without that money.
Well, but that's, that's a different story. If, if, if they didn't ask to make a profit, they asked for you to get them out of the bind that they're in.
But just for clarification, if you look at the numbers under Attachment A, um, when you add them up, they do not equal the Attachment B acquisition costs of the 783,000. Um, so I don't know that those are exactly what the offers are for each property.
Where did the numbers come from?
To higher or lower? I didn't get out my calculator.
Didn't order that.
What?
So, um, Attachment A, when you add up, uh, the subtotals for those, it's 876,420.
Oh, I'm sure Michael's going to look at it before he signs it, make sure that it all equals.
I think we need to make sure at the council meeting that Michael got all the figures correct for each one, and then present it to the individual.
Well, this letter also says we only have 60 days to consider it before it's pulled. So how long have we had that? I'm looking at the date.
I received the grant package maybe a week, week and a half ago. It was not long ago that we received it. Um, we had been notified from BDMs that we could receive the award, but they had not moved it through the process because they were trying to wait until they had confirmation of the state match. So that really kind of handicapped us, because we could have been moving months ago if they had just conveyed that information to us. And once I was finally able to get them to tell me that, I indicated that we would very likely be willing to put the 10% up to get the project moving, and that's when they finally submitted the grant award package to me, so we can actually do something with it.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
I think what we ought to do is move this along to the consent agenda as part of the, uh, the package. We can always pull a consent agenda item at the time. During the interim between now and then, we can do our due diligence to ask the questions that have been proffered today as it relates to values, as it relates to totals, as it relates to other things. Uh, Mr. Stallings can do his due diligence in consultation with Mr. Riddick and, uh, and bring it back to us with some certainty on, on issues. And in the interim, Vice Mayor Butler can, can also explain to Mr. Stallings the concerns that she has or whatever, so that when it comes to town council for a vote, everybody's questions have been answered, but I think we should move it along to the consent agenda.
I think we should, too. I agree.
With the understanding that we'll, we will fund at this juncture on the $92,000.
Right.
Things can change, we can always change our minds.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right. Mr. Stallings, you still on there?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, did you hear what the mayor had to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then we will, uh, see if we can get all those questions answered.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Moving right along, item number three, Great Spring Road drainage update by Tim Dean of Draper Aiden Associates. Mr. Jack Reed.
Yes, sir. Uh, as part of the Great Springs Road drainage issue, we've continued to explore options of ways to alleviate flooding. Tim Dean here from Draper Aiden, now TRC, is here to better explain the cause of the flooding, and he's got in the packet a, a copy of the topographic survey.
Hello, uh, Tim Dean, TRC, from Draper Aiden. Um, Wayne had contacted us some time ago, and we started doing a topographic survey of the creek, uh, starting, you know, pretty much from the bypass road down through Cedar Street, and then about 800 or so feet downstream of the, uh, the outfall there. Um, certainly, there's a number of, of drainage issues that are playing into the bigger picture of it, um, you know, all of them leading to an issue that there's just nowhere for the water to go. Uh, the, down at Jericho Road, if you compare the elevation of- Uh, the, down at Jericho Road, if you compare the elevation of the culvert that goes under, it's about a three-foot culvert, from there all the way back to Cedar Street, you have about one-tenth of a percent of slope. So, it's probably flatter than this floor. Uh, so it's just, there's nowhere for the water to go. And of course, with the big river being tidal influence and such, when you do have that high tide, again, that just, um, increases the, the difficulty for the water to be able to go down anywhere. So, upstream, obviously, you have a lot of development, you have a lot of runoff that's coming off roadways, other development. And that also gets channelized into the small areas, certainly along Great Springs Road, under the bypass, under Cedar Street. So, you have a lot of pinch holes that water just can't go anywhere. So, it's a much bigger problem than just very isolated at that location. So, I'm certainly trying to answer any other questions that Wayne, if you have anything to add.
Y'all had asked us to take a look at it and, uh, at, at, do a drainage, uh, do a drainage study from the area that, that Tim had alluded to. So, we pretty much went from, as he said, in that area and it's, 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 and I took a Google map that it's about a forty-five-hundred-foot run from Cedar Street to Jericho Road. The, the, the ditch run basically back down through that area. And you only have like three and a half feet of fall and forty-five-hundred feet, and like he said, it's a flat grade. So, if we have tide, we have a high tide, a nor'easter hurricane, or anything of this nature, obviously with the additional water flow and a high tide, there's no place for the water to go. It's gonna back up. So, we now have the numbers and everything to show. So, we just wanted to let you know what we had found in regards to that question. All right. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Hall?
Comment? Yes, ma'am.
So, what's the recommendation? And you said we asked you to look at it, but what are the options?
This is partly to piggyback on the, the prior conversation is, is, there's no way to alleviate the flooding. So, the previous conversation would be our recommendation as well.
So, this is backup to say it's a good idea to get these families out of there because there, it's always gonna flood?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comment?
Put that in the packet when you give them their offer.
Yeah. Seriously.
It's not gonna fix itself. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One question. Would Draper Aiden change its name?
Uh, it'd be a year ago name.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number four. Doctrination of Town Council Vision, Michael Stallings.
Yes, sir. Um, included in your packet was a draft of the town council's vision that came out of the retreat we, we did back in February. We had Lois from Tourism take stab at putting together a document that we could use to put that out to the public. And so, it's in that format. It is exactly as it came out of the work session, with the exception of any tweaking that, uh, the Subcommittee of Mr. Pack and Mr. Brooks did. Other than that, it's word for word how it came from, from that work. And so, in your package is that draft document that after a review, we would recommend the council adopt. And then we can start getting that out to the public and getting it in front of the various civic groups and other organizations that we, we may want to push that message out to. The staff has worked on the implementation plan for this document. And we are prepared to bring that to council at the May committee meetings for endorsement. And we were just waiting for council to adopt this vision in its final format. And then we will have the implementation plan drafted and ready for us to start moving on, putting council's vision into action. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, it will be on the council agenda for consideration next month.
Any questions next month?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, so.
Well, it won't be this coming meeting, it'll be June's meeting, correct?
Yes, it'll be at the May council meeting.
Matt, he just.
Okay, well, next month is my.
Right.
I think, Mr. Fama, I, I think there are a number of questions still that may need to be answered. Uh, Michael and I, and I know there are some, some members of council and myself included that have some questions. Would, would table it for a month cause any real problems as far as, um, the dissemination and the scheduling thereof and any problem? Could we, could we table it for a month and it not cause a problem?
And I would even say maybe two months to July, just because, yeah, June, we're gonna be heavily considering budget.
Yeah, but it wouldn't cause any problems on our end. We want the council to, to have it in its final format and be comfortable with it. Uh, all I would do then is I would pull back and hold the implementation plan until council has identified any tweaks or changes that we make sure that our implementation lines up with council's vision. So, I don't have any part of the council pulling it back a month and having to discussion on those key issues.
Well, Ms. Roundtree made a good point. Ms. Roundtree made a good point. Okay, Ms. Roundtree made a good point that we're gonna be heavily involved with budget consideration in June. Um, if, if it pleases the council, I'd, I'd like to table this until the July, next July committee meeting.
I would agree with that too.
I mean, I, I think it's along the lines of what we said, and it was a lovely retreat. And I'm sure the staff are chomping the bit to, uh, make their goals and objectives match what we want to be the vision. But I just don't want to rush it because, like so many things, this is a vision for 2035. It's a long time.
It's a big deal.
And it's a really big deal. And I just want to make sure we do it right. Um, Randy's not here, he and Jeff collaborated on the final wordsmithing. Mr. Stallings on the phone, you know, not on the room. And I just think it needs more discussion and attention than, than we could really give it today. And I, I do have one small problem with the way something came out. But if we can table it till July, I'll talk to you about it later.
I think we ought to table it to July.
All right.
All right.
All right. You still there, Margaret?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, we have decided we need to table this till July. Do you see any problem?
Yes, sir. No, sir, we'll just pull back and the implementation plan and everything will follow adoption of council's vision. So, it will be on July committee.
I think he said it was okay.
Yeah.
He does.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving along.
I think that's the last item that we have, Mr. Stallings.
Yes.
If we can release him, please.
Yes. Mr. Stallings, you're free.
Yes, sir. Yeah. If you need me for anything else, feel free to call me.
How about, uh, the financial statement, did you, is that?
Yeah, budget discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, how about the, uh, March financial statement?
The treasurer's got, the interim treasurer's handling that one, I think. He's co, he's copying on it, but the, I think Jay's here.
I didn't print anything in, it hasn't been involved in, it hasn't been involved in the process.
Discussion. That's the only one, he's by himself.
Where is he standing?
Number seven, I'm, I'm, number six.
Yeah, he needs to be there for that one, that's correct. I tried to let you go, Michael, but I think you gotta stick around for a little while.
It's all right.
Go.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and go to that while he's here?
I think we can, we can roll in one.
All right. Then, next would be number six, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, number five.
Yes, number five, I'm sorry. Uh, recommendation to fulfill, to fill the unexpired term of Laura Ketch Brown on the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. I have spoken to Julie Hess, she has agreed to take that position. And, uh, we will move this to consent agenda for May, May, uh, council meeting.
Okay. Yeah, um, in keeping with tradition, I wanted to alternate, um, as far as council members. Yeah, you haven't set on one, and I think we're coming back around.
I have actually, it's just been a while.
So, uh, for this, um, does everyone else, Leslie, have you kept up with it? Has everyone else set there? We would be, if we had two, that would be, this would be the end of it as far as Ms. Roundtree's concerned, so that'd be number seven. So, we come back around again. So, and, and I'm not gonna do it in any specific order, I'm gonna nominate, or I'm gonna point, uh, Ms. Roundtree and, um, Ms. Roundtree and Mr. Hall will be appointed to that committee.
For what committee, you said? For what committee?
Uh, appointed nominee committee to recommend appointment to fill the expiring term of Christopher Waltney of Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
BZA. That'll be, did you get that, Leslie?
Okay.
All right, moving along, public safety, members of myself, Renee Roundtree and Mr. Brooks. Operational updates from Smithville Police Department Chief, Harry Reddick.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chairman of the membership council in the form of operational updates. We have submitted our March activity report, we're more than happy to answer any questions as it relates to that. Last time I was before you, uh, we were interviewing for administrative assistant position. We have made contact, we've had interviews, we've made contact with the person. And they will be letting us know whether they are gonna accept the position and we'll be moving forward with that. We currently have, um, eighteen full-time employees with one due to retire on this Friday. Lieutenant, uh, Patrick Rojo has submitted his intent to retire. So, Friday will be his last day of deployment with the town, that will reduce our number down to seventeen. Uh, we are giving him a send-off at the three o'clock hour if members of council would like to join us at the police department to give him his well wishes for the next chapter in his life. As it relates to the, some of the concerns, as it relates to Gray Street, um, one of the things we try to do is that we evaluate the traffic, we educate the, the general public, and then if there's a problem, we take enforcement action. So, what our surveys have indicated that has not been necessarily a speeding issue, it has been a volume issue. Um, that's what, when we've conducted speed surveys along the Gray Street corridor, that's what it has, uh, our survey has shown us, that is, it is a volume problem and not necessarily a speeding problem. Not saying that there is not an occasional speeder. In the past, what we've done when we, when we were able to determine that there was a problem, that we would take, uh, enforcement action and do directed patrol. So, um, that's one of the things, we'll be more than happy to conduct another survey to see if the, if the speed has increased. But one of the ways we do it is, is based off a complaint. If we get a complaint of the, of the, of a certain street, we put the equipment up to do the analysis, we educate and then reinforce if there is a speeding problem.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall?
Yeah.
I just want to ask a question about that.
Well, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll do the same thing.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Is there ever a time when your speed monitoring apparatus isn't deployed somewhere? Or do you always pretty much have it somewhere?
The only time it is, is not down is when it's, and when it's about to, when we're charging the batteries. We have one that it's, you can't tell what it is, and that's the one that we use primarily to do the analysis. The one that displays the speed sign, um, we use that to educate the public. So, that if they're speeding, a little red and blue light shows, uh, to let them know that they are speeding. And then, that's what we utilize to educate. And then, if there's an issue, that we take directed patrol for enforcement action.
So, you only do the speed studies on Gray Street when we ask, when there's a complaint or we direct you to? Or is it a regular?
When it's not, we try to deploy it in different areas of, of the town.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Have you used the, uh, the one that shows the speed limit in that area of Gray Street?
Yes, sir, I can say that we have, because once we use the, the, we use the J Mar and then we use the speed sign. And that's the order that we, we put them up. So, we have had the speed sign in the area of Gray Street.
How recent?
I would have to go back and, and, and pull the, uh, speed surveys. I can, I can pull that and be more than happy to let you know, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from anyone?
I have a question from about the report, not about speeding.
Okay.
Okay, so your operational update, you told us how many FTS you have, so how many police officer, uh, FTS do you have open?
Okay, um, right now, we have.
Work the math the other way for me.
We have, right now, we have four vacancies and as of Friday, it will be, it will be five when Lieutenant Rojo decide, well, once he leaves.
Five vacancies, okay. Here's my other question, as I was reading, like, your raw number report of incidents, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And percentage up or down of incidents, it looks better. I've made peace with the fact that we have a lot of felonies, but it was that one drug bust, like, I'm, I'm at peace with that. But then I read our, our proposed draft vision statement, it says we're a safe community, crime prevention, like, everything's hearts and flowers. And then I read, you know, citizen comments like, oh, there's more people coming, crime is up, angst, angst rubbing my hands, right? So, I'm wondering if it's possible for you to provide us with, like, a percentage? Is, is that even a thing? Like, in healthcare, we benchmark a lot of different statistics, right? So, I'm looking for you and your professional opinion to say, in a town of our size or with, uh, you know, per ten thousand residents, this is what the percentage of crimes or things should be? Or this is a good rate, this is not? Are there benchmarking opportunities out there for police to say, so that we can, like, I can go back and say, yeah, we are a safe community, our rate is four-point-two percent per ten thousand and everybody else is twelve percent or whatever?
And I would, we, I will try to work on that and have, try to have a report for you when the next meet, or you like at council.
Or even before, just send it to me. I, I, and I feel like if there is such a benchmark like that, then maybe that could be worked into the operational report. Sometimes a raw number is misleading when you don't know the end size, if that makes sense?
Yes, it does.
There is, State Police Uniform Crime Report will give you the number of felonies per hundred thousand people, certain other crimes for a hundred thousand people, whatever.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's, it's, um, it's there.
I just want to make it right in my mind.
To the chief's point, that's, that's how if you look and see, um, Smithfield normally ranks, what, the top ten safest communities in the Commonwealth?
Yes, sir.
And? Yeah, go ahead.
It can fluctuate, one year you can be in the top ten, the next year you can be in the top twenty. It all depends on what's going on in other localities as well.
And those statistics are what they use as part and parcel of coming up with that, that, that number.
I just want to be able to say that as council member with some certainty, like, yeah, there's some new homes, but, you know, we're still at point zero-two felonies per hundred thousand.
And, and ma'am, to speak to those, to the increase in felonies, the increase in fel, the number of felonies due to the drug operation.
No, I know, yeah, I've made peace with that. I'm just looking now for benchmarks.
And, and if I can help, along with the chief again, having just anguished over those numbers and just prayed that when they come in, that, you know, in a smaller community, one or two incidents. For example, we had some cars, some car, a rash of car thefts that just skewed our statistics off the board. But it was one guy doing the theft of the cars and then he actually, it wasn't one of those scenarios where you steal the car and you take it, you sell it for money. He was actually stealing the cars, driving them across town to see his girlfriend, would leave the car and then would have to find another car to get another ride. He did that, recalled out, and?
Yes.
For like a week and a half before we found him. And we had like eighteen car thefts in like, there were so-called car thefts in two weeks by this one person committing this apparent behavior that really skews your statistics. So, there's a lot of things that go into that mix of what's safe and what's not safe and.
So they break up, or you put them in jail, or how'd you stop it?
He, he stopped, let's just put it that way. He was constrained in his activities.
You know, with regard to that, it reminds me of another comment I was gonna make, and that's about your activity report by police officer that, how do you, how do you say, took an inordinate amount of time or something? And there's a whole page of things, I won't say the gentleman's name, but I guess it's in public record in your operational report. Probably, you know, every other day, we go to this gentleman's house.
Oh, yes, I'm very much aware of that.
Yes, Mr. Hall? I had, Mr. Hall? I, I had the same question. We had one residence eleven times in March where your department and/or the medics went to this guy's house. In some, and there was two or three days where you were there multiple times in one day. Do we have a mental health issue? Is, can you elaborate?
It's a substance abuse issue.
Okay.
A lot of times when the medics are responding to that residence, the, uh, they will request that we respond before they go on scene. So a lot of times, we have to go just to make sure that people are gonna behave.
Understood.
In an orderly fashion. But there is a substance abuse problem. I have reached out to, to family members to try to, to gather, to gain individual help. I've reached out to professional organizations to try to gain help, but the individual has to want the help himself.
And we're down five FTEs, and at this point, he has his own personal police force, almost, this guy, after how many times we've been there?
Not only that, he's got his own personal rescue squad, too.
Right.
That affects my department, the rescue squad. So I'm working with the chief on that to get a...
Like, social services or something?
Well, that's beyond social services.
We've reached out to, social service was one of the agencies that, that we've reached out to. I've also reached out to an individual that, trying to relate to the individual. Whether or not connection has been made, I'm not sure, but I've, I've offered assistance to the mother, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chiefs, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving along to number two. Unfortunately, the, uh, Chief Carroll cannot be here, he's at a funeral, and the Deputy Chief is out of town. Going forward, if the, if they're not available, I will have them send me the information, and I will report for them. Those of you that may or may not know, I am president of the Isle of Wight Rescue Squad, so we work close together.
So we don't have that report today?
I do not. I just found this out before the meeting today, that they wouldn't be here. But next time, I will.
Bet we got a fire department report, they don't?
Yes, we do.
Seems like we do.
And he's up next.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Smith, we're Smithfield Volunteer Fire Department. Our runs in February, we had a total of fifty-one runs called service, and fifty-six in March. We are putting our new ladder truck in service tonight. Run calls, we will be getting with y'all in the future, we will try to get a, um, bunch of past members who's in, trying to get together to do a formal commission of the ladder truck. And I will be getting with y'all when the fire chief get everybody together and make time to do it, since it's the very first new ladder truck the fire department has ever owned in town in Smithfield. Y'all welcome to come to our drills, the first of every Monday every month, and on Friday nights, we do drills with our new members and probationary junior members. It's the third Friday every month, so y'all welcome to come out, hang out with us, and if you have any questions, just contact me. I can meet y'all up there and give you a tour of the facility.
Didn't y'all do a big, uh, training here last month or month before?
Yeah, we, we did a truck class.
Yeah, that was well attended, too.
Yes, ma'am.
You, any idea where some of these people come from to see the classes that, that Smithfield Volunteer Fire Department?
We have teachers from Chicago to New York City come to teach with us, and we have people from all as far as Tennessee, North Carolina, Kentucky, Maryland, and a lot of your major cities around here come to the truck classes. They send their, their officers because they don't get the training on fires like they used to, it's all about medic calls, because that's what ninety percent of the calls in your cities is medics. So they send a lot of their officers to learn to do the more intensive training on truck, how to, how to fight fire.
I think we need to figure out some way for the fire department to put that out to the general public, so the general public knows just how good and how big of a draw the Smithfield Fire Department is to other agencies here for training.
Yes, sir.
That's a great job, Chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions for? Thank you, Chief. Item number four, street closure request for Arts and Festival Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Novak?
Yes, sir, that is a regular street closure for what is now the annual, um, Smithfield Arts Festival. So we'll close Main Street, uh, from nine AM to five PM, I believe, for the festival itself. But of course, we closed it down earlier to get everybody off the road and secure the, the Main Street area.
I noticed that there was, um, some mention of payment to the county for security or something. There was something in the application of the box that costs would be reimbursed to the county for the event. I can pull back up the form.
Yeah.
But it made me wonder if, if we, A, I mean, okay, road closure, but do we have to provide security from the police force, which is already down in FTEs, we've just heard?
Police have...
Or is that staffed by the county?
Police have to be present when there's a street closure, and since this is in the town limits, our town of Smithfield police officers close down Main Street.
And so I had wondered...
And Public Works supports it by providing the closure and trash pickup throughout the day.
So this will result in some overtime?
Yes.
And is that within budget of what you expect for overtime?
Yes.
For the year?
It's budgeted for Public Works and police.
Yeah, this says list recipients of proceeds, vendor fees, I just thought this was interesting, since it's the town people that actually have to be paid to do this. Vendor fees to Isle of Wight County to cover event and logistical expenses. But, but I feel like the town should get some fees. If we have to pay extra for people to stay and pick up trash, why does the county get fees if they're not paying it?
Uh, it's their, uh, since it's their festival within their department, they use the fees to support the festival.
Do you see my point?
I do.
Okay. So maybe we need to negotiate that into this street closure thing that we...
Also with the, the tourism true-up we pay, it's kind of like we're just inflating their cost if we do charge.
Yeah, I just want to know more about it. Okay. I'm not, I'm not not in favor of closing the street, but...
Right.
If there's costs that come from the town and that, yet the county, I don't want to mix it with the true-up. I mean, that's too big of a thing, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm, okay.
So what, would, would this stay on this committee agenda, or would this bump to Parks and Rec? Stay on this agenda? If we wanted to talk about that for the future?
I think it probably should go to Parks and Rec.
Well, yeah, we can, we can, I think Amy knows what's going on as far as what the inquiry is. Normally, Ms. Hare is here, Winslow is here, but I don't see...
She's not today, no, sir.
Okay, well, the next meeting, make sure that she's here for our committee meeting, and we can ask that question at, uh, Leslie, put it on Parks and Rec?
Thank you.
Don't, not, not that the street closings will go and stay at Parks and Rec, just that one question, inquiry, whatever, we can understand as far as the logistics and the findings that are concerned, and if I don't have it quite correct.
No, that's it, logistics of the financing, vendor fees versus cost to the town for closing the street per request by the county.
I do know that tourism doesn't make profit off of any of these events. It's usually what it costs to put them on is what they collect in the vendor fees.
I want to hear from you.
But I know that's separate from the special event cost that we pay our officers and Public Works.
We'll have Ms. Winslow come in and explain exactly the scenario to your satisfaction.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions to come in? All right, I will close the public section.
Yep, now water and sewer, members, Mr. Smith, Pack, Ms. Roundtree. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item today on water and sewer, it's design standards update, and Jack, can you fit us in on that, please?
Yes, sir. Public Works and Utilities Department reviews the town design standards for water and sanitary sewer systems annually. As per our annual review, we propose the following edits and additions. I wasn't gonna go down each one as there is an extensive list, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
She didn't want to have any questions for Janet?
Not looking at you.
Just one, where, where are these updates? What, what has generated the necessity for these updates? Just a change in technology, a change in the way things are done, or?
A lot of things. Some, we've added to add more options as far as parks because of lack of availability. A lot of this is making sure we have certain things dialed in as the development is coming in, and we have more specific standards that the developers need.
Got you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, I'll close our water and sewer.
Okay, next up, finance, members, Mr. Pack, Smith, and Butler. Ms., Ms. Butler, were you, are you still with us?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we have, uh, let's see, seven items. Funding request, that's a good part, who wants to come up for, um, funding request for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four?
There's three documents, I don't know. Genevieve, then the courthouse, then the library.
There's a list that's attached that of all the organizations that appear today.
Okay, hold on.
Here you go.
First, do you, uh, do you need a shelter? Yes, ma'am, please come over.
Hello, everyone, my name is Talia Hall, and I'm the, uh, Direct Service Manager at the Genevieve Shelter, filling in for Ms. Marlese Montgomery, who's the Executive Director. We are requesting funding to help expand our shelter program. We're actually the only domestic violence shelter in the western Tidewater area. So we cover Suffolk, Isle of Wight, Windsor, Smithfield, and Franklin, along with other small counties, a lot of underserved counties. As of right now, we are trying to add an additional shelter. We currently have a shelter that has thirty-six beds. So with a new home that we're trying to build, we will go from thirty-six beds to fifty beds. But of course, with that requires more funding. As of right now, our current shelter is in need of a facelift, so new paint, new flooring, furniture, because it's such a high turnover rate, and we're constantly getting new clients every day. We have seen an influx of clients from the Smithfield area. And just to give a specific number, we provided two hundred and forty-eight survivors in the Smithfield area for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and we provided two thousand six hundred and seventeen nights of shelter stay specifically for Smithfield residents. So with that increase, you know, there's, there's a lot of programs that we do offer, and programs that we're trying to build up for our organization.
Question? Anyone have any questions for?
Considering the numbers that we're dealing with, what percentage of, uh, individuals we're serving are Smithfield in comparison to the other localities? In other words, what, what, do you know what Smithfield occupies? And to follow that up, as far as donations are concerned, how are the other localities holding up as far as providing their end of the bargain as far as donations are concerned? I'm looking kind of for a par value comparison as to what we provide as a town of Smithfield versus, let's say, your other western Tidewater, um, communities.
Okay. Now, let's say in comparison to Suffolk, we get a lot of donations from Suffolk, and we get a lot of clients from Suffolk, that's our main area. Both from Smithfield, as far as percentage rate compared to Suffolk, not nearly as much. But it is increasing, so I would say over the past year, maybe a ten, fifteen percent increase.
Well, that kind of answers, but that, let me phrase it this, how much, how much donation do you get from the city of Suffolk a year?
We get a pretty great deal, I mean, just from churches.
From...
I'm talking about from the government, from the city of Suffolk government. How much do you get?
I would have to get back to you on that specific amount. I know Ms. Montgomery has that specific amount.
Okay.
But they definitely, uh, offer a great deal of funding for our...
Can you, can you get that to Mr. Stallings or to Ms. King before May eighth?
Sure.
I'd like to, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Like to have that in a packet, Leslie.
I mean, so my line of questioning is something similar, right? So if, if you're asking for nine thousand dollars, and like, when the free clinic comes, right? They say, hey, a third of the patients come from Smithfield, a third come from Suffolk, a third come from Franklin. You know, whatever the percentages are, but then they also say it costs fourteen hundred and fifty dollars a year to care for every patient, right? So if I take the nine thousand dollars that you're asking for, divide by twenty-six hundred and seventeen nights, three dollars and forty-four cent a night, okay? And so, again, much to your question, the other number or data point that I would ask for before May eighth is what does it cost to shelter someone for one night, right? So if, if we know that we are six percent of your total occupants, and we also know that it was two thousand six hundred and seventeen nights, and we know that the cost to you is five dollars a night, then it helps us adjust...
I understand.
The donation.
And if I'm in, Mr. Chairman, please understand, as a former law enforcement officer, I understand the valuable service, and I know Ms. Roundtree does, too. We're not, we're not picking over that, we just want to make sure that, as a government, that when we're gonna provide funds, we want to make sure these other localities are providing the funds as well to take care of their constituents as well. That's, that's the only thing that I've gotten my...
Understanding, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And my perspective is to be reasonable, so that if you really should have asked for fifteen thousand instead of nine, does that make sense for the increase? That we understand that.
Three dollars and some cent a night.
Three dollars and forty-four cent a night is what nine thousand divided by twenty-six seventeen is, according to my phone.
Got you.
Okay.
Okay, understanding, I'll get that information May eighth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, um, Isle of Wight Courthouse. Anyone here for that?
I'm David Hunley with the seventeen fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse. My address is two ten Bella Drive. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I'm David Hunley, I'm the Director of the Board of the Historic Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse. And Jim Klein, who's back here behind me, is our Treasurer. First, we'd like to thank you for the support and contributions you have made to the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse in the past. It gives us great pride that the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse here in Smithfield is the symbol represented on the town seal. It symbolizes the beginning of our county government and the importance of that building had been during the creation of Smithfield, being that the courthouse is one of the first buildings built in town. Our mission is to advance the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse and its remarkable role it had in the American experience. Our vision is, all who visit the Seventeen Fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse are engaged by the story of this important building as seen in the context of American history and inspired by its relevance for today's world and to the future. Our Board appreciates the support you have provided to us in the past in order for us to continue our mission and vision for the courthouse, and we thank you very much for that. Two thousand twenty-two is a great year for the courthouse. Our historic building and our participation in local events helped bring visitors to the community. We welcomed close to nine thousand visitors last year, and not only welcoming visitors from our community and local areas, but from all over the United States and several countries around the world. We presently have ten docents, eight are volunteers, two are paid. Last year, we recorded a close to three thousand volunteer hours, which is probably a very underestimated amount. We work very closely with tourism and visitor center to promote the courthouse. We had our first court day reenactment since the pandemic during the two thousand twenty-two art festival. We had our first reading of the Declaration of Independence on the steps of the courthouse and ushered in the observance of Constitution Week with the reading of the preamble of the Constitution, and we work very closely with the Daughters of American Revolution. We also opened during the vintage market, and we supported the mistletoe market with hosting the Cocktail Garden for the Tourism and Visitor Center. We've done our ghost walk, we've been involved in the Christmas tree lighting, and our annual, um, Christmas parade. We've been involved in the Christmas tree lighting and our annual Christmas parade. Two thousand thirteen, we continued to work for our mission and vision. Our operating hours, we're closed during January. We're opened on the weekends in February, and March and December, we're open every day and free to the public. We will continue working with our close relationship with the visitor's center, and we will repeat a lot of the activities that we did in two thousand twenty-two. Ghost Walk, Court Day, and Christmas in Smithfield. We're also working on developing strategies to increase membership, so we encourage all of you to become members of the seventeen fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse. But most importantly, your funds are to help us to continue working, developing programs, and exhibits to highlight the history of the building. Our committee, our commitment to preserving the seventeen fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse for our community and visitors to Smithfield is possible for our three major fundraisers, donations from committee members, visitors to the courthouse, and the contributions from the county and the town of Smithfield. These contributions make it possible to tell the story of this remarkable building and the role it has played in the American experience, but most importantly, to our community. Again, let us thank you for your support in the past, and thank you for considering your support in the future.
David, how much are you asking for?
Typically, five thousand dollars.
Your private donations, do they seem to come in fairly? On a steady basis?
No.
Do you make phone calls?
We rely mostly on membership, occasionally contributions, and our donation box at the courthouse. We average, Jim, can you share with them what we average about on the donation box?
My name is Jim Klein. My address is two oh seven North Mason Street. We usually average about, oh, two hundred dollars a month from just walk-by donations. And our big donation time for membership is in November, and we usually get about three to five, three to five thousand dollars in membership.
And the county, you said you.
They award us five thousand dollars.
Is this reflective of what it takes to operate during the year?
No, we have to have, we have other fundraisers and other drives. As you know, insurances have just skyrocketed. Of course, you have to have blanket visitor insurance. You have to have building insurance. You have to have liability insurance, work from a comp. In addition, the utilities have skyrocketed this year. So a lot of expenses have raised, so we're just asking for what, just to continue, your continued support, and we have other fundraisers that we're going to use to meet our additional costs.
We have three major fundraisers. Our court day, which we're doing Saturday, which we welcome everybody to come and see us. It is an actual court case that was tried in that courthouse. So court day is one. Ghost Walk in October is our next, and Christmas in Smithfield. So those three fundraisers bring in quite a bit of money.
Any questions?
I have a question. Hi, so I'm looking at your proposed operations budget, and it seems like the ins match the outs, right? So that's by design, I'm sure, for twenty twenty-three. I see, you said the county gives five thousand typically? Because it says finance, government donations, and I only see one line item for five thousand. So if we gave five and they gave five, am I missing where else this would be?
We, at that time when we did the budget, we had not received donations from both county and town. So that's what we put in the budget. And later on, with the, it was a mix-up. The town donation was mailed to a different post office box, and it went to our hosting organization, and we did not receive a donation, so. I think we have that clear now. It went to historic.
Sorry, so our donation went somewhere else?
Well, it went to historic.
Well, that Smithfield.
We're owned by Historic Smithfield, but the seventeen fifty Isle of Wight County Board operates it, functions, and keeps it going. Historic Smithfield owns the building. So when we receive donations, it comes to the seventeen fifty Isle of Wight County Courthouse. Apparently, the five thousand dollars he's referring to went to Historic Smithfield, but then came to us.
No, it did not.
It did not come to us. Okay, sorry.
They just kept it?
It was four thousand, actually.
Oh, it's four thousand, yeah.
It was, I'm sorry.
Four thousand.
So this year, you're asking for five thousand to get a correct place?
Yes, ma'am, and we also have received the twenty twenty-three amount from the town of Smithfield, and it came to our address. That's all been worked out with the town.
And are you on a June thirty or December thirty-first? What's your fiscal year?
December thirty-first, January first.
So this twenty twenty-three budget is representative for the governmental donation only of the county's five thousand?
Yes.
And our four thousand that eventually.
No, it didn't.
Never made it to you is not in here? Okay. And how much is it? Thank you. It's not your fault. I just wanted for clarification, because I had read the revenues and expenses. How much is it to rent the courthouse? Because I went to a lovely event that Mr. Grace had, and I was just curious what the cost to rent was.
Minimum of three hours, a hundred dollars an hour. So three hundred dollars.
Wow. And does that even cover to keep the lights on?
Yeah, it covers to keep the lights.
Yeah, okay.
It's very.
It's a great little deal.
At the same time, our venue is limited to being rented to a certain group of people. For example, we can't have more than fifty people. So our venue is enticed, it's an enticement to those that will have a small intimate social gathering or a small wedding. In fact, we have it rented May the fourth for a small wedding of fifteen people. So, you know, we're not like Smithfield Center here, or Smithfield Station, or any other that could handle a large group of people.
Well, I appreciate the work you do, and the event that they had was very nice. I think there may have been a little more than fifty people, but I get your, I get your limit. Thank you.
Any other questions? Appreciate y'all coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. See you Saturday.
I'm bummed. I'm out of town.
Next on list is Friends of the Library. One of my favorite.
Good afternoon to all the council members, Mr. Chair. For the benefit of those, I see some new faces. I am Jim Phillips, and I'm in my tenth year now as the president, as you were, chairman of the Smithfield Library, we know each other. And I've always been here at the behest of the request of the town council that wanted to continue to support the library. After, anyway, I won't go into that. But the issue was that they wanted to continue to support programming for Smithfield. And so that's why, once a year, I come up here and I present special programs that normally we can't do or couldn't provide due to funding. I hope you was able to go through the packet that I submitted. The key thing I wanted to get through there was that my branch manager, as well as our youth programmer, could not be here because of staffing considerations. So they're working tonight. So I'm doing all the work, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have. But that's a key thing for us as we move forward with these special programs for Smithfield, and that's important for you to know. Nor the library presents these programs in the county except us here in Smithfield. And they've helped us, and if we had, well, actually, if the parents had their way, we would do this five days a week. But we can't because we only have our youth programmer and director for only three days a week. We haven't been able to get, anyway, that's a staffing concern, being funded from Blackwater. So the programs are appreciated. The parents are participants. Mike calls them captured. Remember that term still, Mike. They do participate as well as make suggestions, and we follow up on those suggestions where we can, where we can meet those needs. The two programs, I'm, well, I'm proud of all of them, but the one that surprised me, to be honest with you, was the adult or senior programming that was started to regain the participation of our senior citizens such as myself to come back to the library after the forced lockdowns. And the methodology used, I was suspect of, but I'm glad to report that we started off with four participants in the adult programming the first time around, and we're now up to over eighteen. So, and there's more coming in, so that's good to know. The other one I'm very proud of is our teenagers. That started off minimal, and we are now up to, I think, now fourteen or fifteen. And while they're there, they help volunteer as well as make improvements to their own section of the library for those of you that have not been there. We have a devoted section specifically for the teens, and of course, for the urchens. You know, and everything in that room is at their level. Makes it hard on us grandparents, but it's, everything's down at their level, including the chairs. So with that said, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that I can if there are any questions regarding what we are requesting this year.
What I'd like to let everyone know here, that Jim has always come and detailed this out pretty specifically, and he's always been very fair about it and very minimal as far as also some many cases. And I've seen the work they've done. What it allows us to do is we're not part of giving money to the Blackwater Library and hoping it comes back to Smithfield. It directly affects us, and we're directly helping them, so we're not wishing that money came back. We know exactly where it's going. So all the work they do, I really appreciate it. Jim does a bang-up job. He really does. A lot of volunteer hours, and if he can keep Catholic ballers straight, I wish him well.
Well, I, yeah.
No comment.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, it may seem like, I'm thinking, I was thinking, one person asked me, Jim, ten years, you'd be like a dictator. And I says, no, my fellow board members are all women, and trust me, I am not.
I think we ought to move along.
Yeah, I have two questions. The first is, Mr. Phillips, first has to do with the newly established program, Smithfield Foods with Dolly Parton's.
Yes, we did.
Foundation, so you're coordinating with that?
Yeah, we work with them as well, and in the past, when we had the staffing we needed, we were able to go after and successfully receive a high amount of grants from Dollar General. Of course, you know, when you take a grant, you have, just like I do with the town here, I, you get feedback. I don't, if you ask me where did the money go, I provide it.
Right.
You know where your funding is going to go to and what. I don't stall on that regards. But specifically to your question, anything like that, yes, we are. We do participate. We participate with all the merchants in town. And there, I might say, some of the merchants are very key in urging us not to stop the story walk and all of that, and believe me, that takes time.
I really appreciate your detailed outline of the, you know, costs slash expenses that would be attributed to.
Yeah, we'd like to do more.
Any donation, yeah. Secondly, is a survey that I think I must have gotten from the Blackwater Library as a card-carrying member with regard to evening hours? Was there a survey that came out in the last few months about that? I got an email in my email box about maybe curtailing evening hours of the libraries.
I hesitate to deal specifically with that. But yeah, they have made efforts, and our branch manager has been successful at, you know, resisting that, because she has restored the library after, anyway, that one year, year and a half, to meet and in some cases exceed the numbers we have. In other words, we are the number one library in the county.
Sure.
Okay? We are right back on top. No one else meets it. And so I think they're, she's winning that battle, and I think they're going to hesitate.
Okay.
Yeah, specifically the young people.
Yeah, I'm really interested in the senior programming as well.
Yes, and believe me, I was a skeptic of what, but it's, I mean, yeah.
Thank you for the detail.
Absolutely. Anyone else, anything.
Any other questions? Jim, I thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stop by the library, Mike. Well, you do.
It's been too long. Arts League?
Okay, we've got February financial statements. Oh, we did? I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's kind of buried in there. Isle of Wight Arts League.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. Isle of Wight Arts League. I'm sorry.
Arts League, yes. Whoever's speaking.
Good afternoon. Sheila Gwaltney. I'm the director of the Arts Center at three nineteen. Is one of four programs of the Isle of Wight Arts League. We are requesting a grant from the town of forty-five hundred dollars, which will be matched by the Virginia Commission for the Arts. And we use that money in the operation of the Arts Center on Main Street. We entered memorandum of understanding with the Smithfield Isle of Wight Tourism in two thousand eight, and we have operated a partnership there at three nineteen in the space. We provide a showcase for our community artists, and we offer their creations through our gift shop. We have changing exhibits in the gallery and offer coin arts instruction in our classroom. We also went space to eight resident artists. We operate, as I said, in partnership with tourism three hundred and sixty-two days a year, and we are staffed with two part-time people, about eight regular volunteers on a weekly basis, and seven of our resident artists also pitch in for operations. So I think Leslie helps us very much with applying to the state for the matching funds.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Smith, I didn't see a document with regard to the similar document that the seventeen fifty courthouse provided, so what's your overall budget for the year?
For the Arts Center, it's about a hundred twenty-five thousand. Our income comes about a third from grants and grant writing, a third from memberships and donations, and a third that we earned through commissions on sales and classes.
Thank you.
And rent from studio spaces.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming up.
Thank you very much.
We have one more. It's Isle of Wight County Christian Outreach.
Hello. I'm sorry if I seemed a little anxious. I've got clients. I'm Rick Rollins. I've been the executive director for two years. Last year, we've requested twelve thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and we received that. This year has been much more trying, to say the least. We've seen our number of clients go up by, oh, I think, twenty-two percent. In April, we had a red-letter day. We served a hundred and ten families in one day. Hundred and ten families. That's families, not people. And that equates to several thousand people in the month. In addition to the number of people going up. In, in addition to the number of people going up, our costs have skyrocketed. And I don't have to tell you what the cost of food is, but in addition to what we buy, the food bank is now charging us for food that they provide to us. In the past couple of years, the ACP funds and so on from the federal government and the state government have covered those expenses. And we've gotten free food. No more. So, for example, food expenses in 2020 for the year, eleven thousand five hundred and fifty. 2022, ten thousand two hundred and sixteen. 2023, so far, eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, we've gone seventy thousand over, and they just started charging us in January. So, that's only three months. In addition, we spend, we buy fresh fruits and vegetables. We buy eggs. We have bread, shelf-stable items that we can't get from the food bank that we think are good nutritional things. And, you know, cost of eggs, it's sky-high, you know? So, we've, we've really gone up in our budget. Honestly, I don't remember if I put in a dollar-figure request, but we would ask that it would be higher than what we got last year. And those, that's not just our, our food, that's just our food program that I talked about. You know, we also have dental program. We spend about seventy thousand dollars a year on providing dental care to people that need it. We have emergency services. Emergency services in 2020 were thirteen hundred dollars. So far this year, we've gone over six to two hundred. That's rent, utilities, sometimes prescriptions. We, we really limit it to what is necessary. But that's, again, we're up a lot higher. Home repairs, we, we're up again. People are not able to fix their houses. If you can't fix the house, you can't live in the house, or you can't live in a sanitary condition or a healthy condition. And we go in and we'll provide services as much as we can within the budget that we have. We'll put in ramps for people that are coming home from the hospital and now have to have a ramp to get into their house. We'll provide that. The roof's leaking. We'll fix the roof. We will fix a whole roof, but we will help. Floor's rotted out because the roof is leaking. We fix the floor. But you can't expect people to live in houses that, you know, they're gonna fall through the floor. We had another one that had no electric, they had electricity to the house, none of the outlets worked. You know, fix that. So, that's the kind of things we do. I'm sure we, we've been around town enough that you know what we do. We, we sponsor the Dolly Parton. So, I don't know the gentleman that was here before, but the Dolly Parton program, we, we started getting that rolling along with the library in Jonathan Toms. And they've already gone over a hundred more people signed up than they expected for the whole year. And we just had to kick off in February. So, that's, that's another program. But we're working with the library. We work with all kinds of organizations within the, within the community, county, wherever it needs to be done. Can I answer any questions?
Food bank's now charging you for food?
Yes. About fifteen hundred dollars a month.
How much?
Fifteen hundred dollars a month on average. And that's not including, well, we do get some, vegetables are still free, but the stuff, shelf-stable stuff like spaghetti sauce, canned soup, and rice, and corn.
Do you work with the peninsula or the south side? Which food bank do you work with?
We work with the Norfolk one, the southeastern Virginia and outer shore, or eastern shore.
Are you, I know at one point in work with Christian Outreach.
Yes.
There was a time where the clientele was certified that it, whatever, these social services, as far as truly being in need. And that changed. What, what, that's my point. If you can explain to me eligibility or what's now.
The in need is for the utilities, the, like, we have, they have to prove that, here's the bill, I don't have a job. They have to prove that kind of stuff.
How about the food aspect?
Food, we're not even allowed to ask, other than we'll ask that, do you live in Isleway County? And how many people do you have in your household? That's it. The food bank basically forbids us from asking what they make.
But that was before the food bank was charging you for food?
Right.
Yeah, but it didn't matter. We almost, before my time, it was almost shut down because the, a person from the food bank came.
I remember.
So, I was gonna say, this might have been during your time, yeah, because they asked for an ID. So.
Chairman, I do. Let, let me understand this. The donations that the food bank directly gets are, for the most part, donated.
Those are free.
And now they're charging you?
No. Okay. Donated foods, like, when the Walmart shooting occurred over in Chesapeake, Walmart emptied that store out and gave all of its stuff to the food bank, all the food. That was free. If somebody donates, you know, forty-five cases of cereal, says, hey, we can't sell this, here you go, they'll give that to us for free. But if they have to go out and buy it.
Okay.
They pass that on to us. They're not making anything, but.
I understand. Yeah. Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
We're not doing.
What's your total budget for the year?
Afraid you were gonna ask me. Honestly, I don't, I can't.
So, can you get us just total budget and a specific request of what amount? Because we don't have anything in our packet. So, by May eighth, if you can get us those two things.
The total budget is, I'm gonna say, two hundred and fifty thousand for everything, our book programs, everything else. In past years, we haven't worried too much about it because I was able to write a couple very good grants that were funded, and that got us through. But we're not seeing that this year so much.
Okay. If you just wanna check that, and like, let me hear your head said, too.
I mean, so we're, we were twelve, say, twelve-five last year, fifteen, I would say is a fair request, not being greedy or anything. But, you know, it'll last us a while. Of course, we are a hundred percent volunteer, you know?
And then if you have any way of quantifying, again, similar to the line of questioning the Genevieve Shelter, if you have a way of quantifying how many people are from Smithfield that you serve.
I would say the best way to judge it is close, you know, in Smithfield and close by, you know, just on the periphery.
Right.
Is probably a third. Because the farther away people are, the less likely they are to come, unless they're in a real food desert type of place. Or they do serve the entire county. So, yeah, it's.
Any other questions?
Any more?
Appreciate you coming forward and letting us know about it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for your hard work, for sure.
Yes.
Well, we're getting, we're gonna be bigger. One of the grants I got is to provide a recuperative vehicle so that we can serve further out into the county.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving along, we have cash balances. Jake, can you speak on that briefly, please?
Yes. All right. Here's a report. And I'm just gonna summarize it if you have particular details. But in a general fund, we've got twenty point seven million enterprise funds, which are six point six million, are comprised of water, one and a half million, sewer, five point one million. So, that's, that's the cash balances. There was the, the Virginia investment pools at point five three eight million. So, and really, all I've had time to focus on so far, I'm just looking at major amount and percentage variances. And really, the only thing I found so far was the local, the revenue variance for the other local taxes. Target for right now, since this statement period was, cash balances are March 31st, but this statement period was ending in February 28th. So, the eighth period would have been sixty-six point seven percent. So, we were pretty low on that at fifty point nine percent. And that's comprised mainly of the sales, the utility, consumption, business licenses, cigarette, occupancy, and meal taxes. So, mainly everything where people spend money was a little on the low side. So, that's basically.
So, large revenue variance is sixty-six point seven percent?
Yeah. In other words, if you're look, if you look at the report, you know, it's at fifty point nine percent for the revenues versus sixty-six point seven, which would be the target for the eighth month.
Gotcha.
So, and we're in the middle of a, you know, water rate analysis and all that kind of stuff, far as enterprise funds. So, that's in process, too. So, that's really not my focus on this. I'm mainly focused on the general fund.
Did, I'm sorry, did you say, speaking about the investment pool update?
Yeah, it's at, it's at five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and something change.
Any questions, Jake?
Could I just ask that the fund statements get added to our packet a little bit before, like, an hour before the meeting? So, I don't know why that takes so long.
I can tell you, since I got here, I started in the weeds. Been in the weeds pretty much the whole time. And I just barely get in my head above the water.
Okay. So, we were lucky to get it before the meeting Thursday?
My goal is to do, do better than that. You know, we have two implementations going on with software. I got a fifty-year-old legacy system that we're trying to, to work with, and somebody who's pretty green on figuring out how, how all these different systems work. So, you know, still trying to, trying to navigate through the black forest right now.
And then when I talked to Michael earlier today, he said he's gonna get with you about ARPA balances, right? So, what we've spent so far in funds, what may have been left over from projects that we've done, as well as things that we were budgeting to spend ARPA on, and the exact then ensuing total of what we have left.
Well, I'm sure things need to be appropriated still, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think what he told me was, the last memo he had was from, like, February, and he thinks that it needs to be updated. Just so you know, at the last council meeting, we did have a citizen request, an outline of the ARPA funding and where it's gone, and just an explanation. And I, too, would love that as soon as possible.
I'm thinking Michael.
Yeah, I think they can, too. I'm just letting him know. Michael made a commitment. They were gonna get together and do that for us.
Would you call it, call it an ARPA citizen request?
It was a citizen request at the last town council meeting to get an accounting of that, and I would like it as well.
Okay, moving forward, any other questions to Jake? Before we have a recommendation to award professional engineering and consulting services, Jack?
Yes, sir. Six firms responded to the town Smithfield's request for proposal for engineering services, which closed on January 27th, 2023, and interviews scheduled thereafter. The selection committee reviewed all proposals received, as well as interviewing all six firms, and determined that three of the firms best matched the town's needs. Therefore, staff proposes awarding contracts to Kimley Horn, TRC, Draper Aiden, and Timmons Group, to all three groups being able to address our primary need for civil engineering services in-house without the need to utilize subcontractors. These engineering services include potable water, sanitary sewer, stormwater streets, and public facilities engineering. The town has worked with all three firms before, and we all, we have a positive work history with all three firms.
You might have any questions to Jack about this?
Yeah, I do. Just one quick one for the, for the record. Who were the other firms?
It was Van Salt and Gustler.
DHJ.
DHJ and.
Summit Design.
Have they submitted in the past?
I believe we've worked with Summit on a few projects. I don't know if they've submitted for this particular contract, but we have worked with them in the past.
You might have any questions? I mean, I know we've worked with these before sometime now. So, I know we complain about the fees, but.
It's one of the reasons we had a third firm, to, to keep it a little more competitive.
Well, that's, quite honestly, that's my concern. You know, for me, they're all saying, and I don't mean it wrong with familiarity breeds contempt.
Yes, sir.
And I've, I've sat here many, many years and heard the same names of the same engineering companies over and over again. And there's nothing wrong with that. If we're getting the best value for the buck, and they're doing a great job, that's fine. That's your purview. That's ultimately, we, we'll decide who gets it. But I just wanna make sure that the analysis that was conducted, as far as when we award these firms, and I don't mean anything wrong, I just wanna make sure that, that the town's people in the town and, and even their competition are, everybody's getting a fair shake, and it works out that way. So, that's where the level of trust lies. So.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jack.
Yes, sir.
We have a discussion item, real estate billing update. Jake, do you know anything about that? Michael, is, Michael, are you there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We have a discussion item, but real estate billing update?
Yes, sir. This comes out of the Munis conversion that we're still in the middle of. What we will need to do, currently, we are on a December to, or January to December real estate tax billing cycle, whereas the county is on a July to June cycle. In order for the real-time interface to work with Munis and getting that information directly from the county, we are gonna have to switch our real estate billing cycle to mirror the counties. What this will mean is that we will have to do a six-month real estate billing in the June-July timeframe to get on that same cycle. Then, moving forward each year, real estate bills will come, come out in that timeframe. We will make paid personal property bills in December. But to make the interface work and to get on the same schedule as the county, we need to move our billing to that calendar. And again, the biggest change here is that this June-July timeframe, we will have to do a real estate bill. That would be for the first six months of the year. So, it would be half of what the citizen would normally receive. But it would get us on that cycle, and then they would not receive another real estate bill until next summer. So, that's the, the biggest piece. We'd have to do an education campaign to explain that, so people understand why they're getting an additional bill, but they would not receive one until the next year. And again, that's the only way for us to get the real-time interface to work, the county in Munis.
Your timeframe on this was?
Jake has been working with the folks at Munis, and I think we both feel confident that we could get that done this year. And if we don't do it this year, then we would have to wait an additional year to go live in Munis. Otherwise. Otherwise, that real-time interface will not work.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do it this year?
No, that really comes down to a bandwidth question within the treasurer's office and being able to get those bills out and run. Uh, but I think from my conversations with Jake, if he could speak to it more, I think we feel comfortable being able to do that this year.
Yeah, what we would need to do, we would have to, obviously have to have some type of, uh, um, communications, you know, run interference to the public to go out there first, um, to explain the, the reasons and the benefits to the, to the customers. And the bottom line is, we did be doing it in the legacy system, we'd have to do the billing from the old system in order to get it to the point where we're on the same cycle with Isle of Wight. Cause the real estate assessments are gonna be this, the, the next four-year cycle starts this July. So it's kinda really critical to avoid, there's already a lot of backend stuff that has to be done to accrue things from one year to the next and have half of one assessment from one year and half of an assessment from another year. You know, since it's not on the same cycle, and that would help to improve the accounting going forward also. But anything is, like, like Michael said, it's, the real-time interface isn't gonna work with munis, um, otherwise. So the sooner that we get on the same cycle, the sooner that we will be able to push that forward. And it kinda makes sense to do it in an assessment year when they're, you know, so that way when July one hits, that, we're on the same page with Isle of Wight. Then they won't get billed again until the following June for real estate. Personal property will still be in December. They'll still only get billed once a year, um, but at least that's the, you know, the, when I, when I say that's what'll happen. It's obviously gotta be approved by council. Uh, billing has to be approved by council. Everything has to be, you know, before we would do any of that. So, um, providing that is, we get to go, then we would wanna do that, you know, to move that forward.
Question.
Will this conversion ensure that the tax bills will be going out on time, and there won't be the delays that we've been confronted with over the last several years?
Knowing a little bit of the history from what I've heard, um, yes, it should prevent that. I mean, we're still in the munis conversion, so we still, um, how's the new system gonna work? Hopefully, well, you know, it's, it's a new and, uh, you know, modern system, so hopefully it will, uh, be much better in that respect. And it should be, so I mean, foreseeably, uh, the answer is that it would be a positive yes.
And just so we understand, and I heard it a couple times, but I wanna make sure that everybody does, that the real estate bill for the town of Smithfield will be issued during the summer months. That'll be the once-a-year bill that you get for real estate if you're a town resident.
Right, and it would be, it would be billed whenever we can get this billing, as far as the, you know, figuring out the due dates and all that. But it would be billed through, for June, from January one to June thirtieth, so it'll only be a six-month bill. And the next bill would be billed for June in the twenty-four. So for the July one to, uh, June, June thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jake. Um, and was it discussions for twenty-three, twenty-four? Michael?
Uh, yes, sir. Included in your packet, you had a summary of the draft budget. The, the biggest things that are still being added and updated are capital projects as we go forward. But the, at this point in time, the, the biggest thing that council needs to make a decision on is our real estate tax rate. This year, as Jay's mentioned, is a reassessment year. The preliminary information we have received from the Commissioner of Revenue is that we should expect about a twenty-five percent in real estate value, uh, increase in real estate values. And so we have three options as far as real estate rates concerned. The, the first is we can leave the rate where it is. Uh, that would result in an increased real estate bill to the homeowners due to the increase in value of their homes. We estimate that that would generate about eight hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. Second option is to move the rate to a revenue-neutral rate, which would be about fourteen cents, uh, compared to our current nineteen cent rate. And then the last option would be to find somewhere in the middle, to where the town would still see some additional revenue to help us fund some of our strategic planning initiatives, and also lessen the burden on the homeowners. So currently, the budget proposal anticipates a rate of seventeen cents. Uh, again, that would drop the current rate by two cents, but still allow us to see some of that increased revenue from the increased value of homes. So council would need to make that decision so that we can go ahead and move forward with ensuring that the budget numbers are accurate based off of council's desire for the real estate rate. And, uh, at this point, we can take some discussion from that, and then I will take direction and move, move forward with, uh, making sure those numbers are reflected in the budget, and then we'll also have to do our advertisement for the tax rate setting.
So, Mr. Chairman, that question. So, a few things. I don't want to increase taxes, but I do think leaving the real estate rate at the current rate is, uh, is not a terrible idea, given the fact that we're gonna change, I mean, tell me how this is gonna work, right? With the change of when we're gonna make the, the real estate bills go out. So if they go out and they're due, you said June thirtieth, but then that we won't get revenue again until next June thirtieth? How does that, how does that affect the remainder of, well, I guess that really affects January to July of twenty twenty-four? I mean, won't, won't we actually be taking in less revenue for half of the next fiscal year? So the fiscal year we're budgeting for right now?
In, in, that, that really depends on when we set the due date. If, if we set it for June, we should receive actually one and a half times the real estate rate, assuming everybody pays on time. If we elect to set the rate or the due date for July, then yes, we would have one year where we had revenue that would be less than normal. But as the county does, they set theirs for June so that that revenue can stay in that fiscal year.
So the purpose is to match the county, so we don't have as many manual interventions and all that. I'm totally on board with that. So if we did that and we said, okay, real estate tax is due June thirtieth, that goes into this FY, right? And then.
Right, and they, they set their due date for June fifth, normally.
Okay, so June fifth, again, whatever is to match the county. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around in what budget fiscal year we lose because of this transition. And then I think that affects partially what we decide for the rate.
Right, I, I don't know that we will lose anything. If anything, we may gain six months of additional revenue, depending on when people make their payments and when we set this initial due date.
Yes, sir, please. Um, and maybe Mr. Riddick can help. But I, I was under the presumption that during assessments and things like that, that the requirement was that things had to be revenue-neutral, unless you could document or target specific needs for that, or.
You can set, you can set the rate anywhere you want, but, but you have to, you have to go through an exercise, a public hearing, that it gets advertised, that you have to advertise what the rate would be to be revenue-neutral. In other words, you can't, you have to tell the public in a public setting that you are raising their taxes, even though, um, even if you reduce the rate, you may be raising their taxes. Because the, if it's a twenty-five percent increase and you reduce the rate to seventeen percent, you're still raising their taxes.
Well, I'll just, yeah.
Right, and just for example purposes, I ran some calculations on a home that was valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I believe they're in your packet. If we left the rate as is, their real estate bill would go up about a hundred and sixty dollars a year. At the seventeen cent rate, uh, I believe it was somewhere around eighty dollars a year. But those numbers are in your packet, just speaking from memory. So it, it gave you an example of what that home at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what the resident would see as far as their tax bill based off those rates.
Well, the nineteen cents is a hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. If you leave it the way it is, that's gonna be an additional a hundred and sixty-six dollars, uh, a year. And then if you go to the middle ground, um, it brings it up to about seventy-nine dollars a year more, just for your information.
Right.
And so if you lower it to fourteen cents, it's neutral?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Michael?
I'm just wondering, like, is there a, is there a downside to playing around with this rate every year? I mean, is that typical? It's only my second year on council.
It is not typical except for in reassessment years. We, we are forced to look at it during reassessment years when the assessment goes up. I believe it's more than one percent as far as the impact on your tax rate. So each year that there's a reassessment, we are forced to look at our rate. But to normal means, no, we don't have to monkey with it every year.
And so then what's been our history, Michael, of, of the rate? Like, when's the last time? You said the reassess.
The rate, right, the rate has not been adjusted since I've been with the town, which has been three years. Um, and normally, it is about that time. I believe when the previous manager was here, there was a tax adjustment. But I am not a hundred percent sure. Some members of council may be more familiar with that than I.
Well, Mr. Riddick's been here longer than I have sitting at the table. But sitting on the other side of the table as chief of police and watching the proceedings from two thousand and twelve on, I don't really recall. Matter of fact, they lowered them at one point.
We've lowered rates, not increased rates. Nine, but nineteen is, is, that's the highest it's been at all. I mean, it's been significantly lower, and we've had to, um, adjust it because of the, the reassessment over the years.
We, we, we have a, we have a surround on this chairman.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
At least we have some talk about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Michael needed it so that he could get his budget done. He needs to know what to put in the budget. He's made the assumption that we're gonna agree to seventeen cents.
We will have a public hearing in, later in May, and at that public hearing, we will have to advertise a tax rate. And so as long as we have that number before the advertising deadlines, we will be fine. But right now, our budget draft is assuming a seventeen cent rate.
We might have time to look at that.
Yes.
I guess what's really important, um, Mr. Chairman, if I could, is that we need to know, and the public needs to know, if we're gonna do, start moving numbers around that generate revenue, where is that, where's it gonna be spent on?
Right, each part is there.
Just to say that we're gonna do it.
Any instructions?
Yeah, so we need to know what it's gonna be spent on. That's the main thing as well.
And there's a friend from a house in Park Garage, and she said, you never know who you end up marrying. Um, and it's thirty-four dollars a night, but it's, it's gonna be all.
Who is that?
It's some, it's somebody that's.
Somebody's in the car with Michael or beside him.
I'm sure they're signing in for the damn thing.
Watch it now, Mr. Riddick.
Michael's bubble was moving, so it's somebody.
Sorry about that.
That's how you tell who's talking, who's ever lit up. I do these conference calls all day.
Melinda's with, yes, okay.
No, it wasn't her, it was Michael.
No, but it was somebody with Michael.
He's got a, you gotta give him, when's your public hearing on the budget gonna be? June?
He just said May.
Right now, the anticipation is that it will be the same night as committee meetings in May, and that way we could have adoption of the budget at the June council meeting.
May twenty-second, is that right?
I'm looking.
Yes, ma'am. Right, that's the anticipation is that it would be that evening after committees.
Michael, so like, uh, the mayor said, if we, uh, move forward to seventeen cents, can you provide us with where this other money, this extra money's coming from? Where is it gonna go? What's it gonna do?
Yes, sir, and I believe the summary that I provided to you showed about four hundred thousand dollars, um, surplus. Since that time and since looking at capital projects, that number has dropped down to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars surplus. So very quickly, these, uh, capital projects, as well as the initiatives that council has identified as strategic plan, will very quickly, uh, use up those funds as we go to implement council's vision.
So how long do we have to advertise before the public hearing? The public hearing's on the twenty-second?
Right, with.
This is always.
Budget has to, and the budget has to be advertised more than seven days. So we, um, why are you gonna do it in, at the committee meetings?
Well, I wanna do it at committee meetings because previously, if we had the public hearing at the town council meeting with anticipated adoption at committee meetings, if we had to make changes, we didn't have much time between the end of committee meetings and the beginning of the fiscal year to make any changes. Going on this calendar, if there are changes that need to be made, it gives us almost all the month of June to do that and still have a budget in place before July one.
Well, you have, the law says, you can't, you can adopt the budget at your July meeting, but you can't appropriate the, um, funds until, um, you can't appropriate the funds at the same meeting.
We, we can talk about that. That's what I've done in the past.
Well, there's timing. Well, there's, we've, we've figured out the timing on this thing. I, I don't.
Right, we can do that, but regardless, that's the biggest decision, and we, we'll talk more at the May council meeting, and you'll be provided with a full detailed draft budget proposal the first working day of May.
First working day of May, not, not the eighth?
Right, you will have it ahead of that meeting. So May first, I will deliver a draft budget proposal to town council.
And we just told all the people we're gonna give money to, they needed to give us information by the eighth of May.
Well, I will have anticipated contributions in there, and if council elects to change those, there will be ample time and, uh, funds available to do that.
Okay, and even on the eighth, if we decide to do the budget meeting with the public hearing on the twenty-second, it's a seven-day requirement, and we still have time to do that, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Michael was wanting, like, in past years, we haven't passed budget till the eleventh hour, right before the new fiscal year started, and he was wanting more time to, you know, contemplate it and to get it all worked out before July first rolled around. I mean, he had expressed that to me. Several years ago, he wanted to move up that calendar.
Okay, moving forward, any other questions? Uh, we have one on, I have Michael on, salary adjustments, you wanna comment on that?
Yes, sir, that, yes, I will. Uh, as you see in your package, the current proposal is a five percent, uh, adjustment with a minimum of a thousand. That is in keeping in line with most localities around us. Uh, most are in that five to seven percent range. Uh, so this will keep us in line with most people around us. The other caveat is, there were several employees that didn't get all the way to their recommended pay from the classification study. So we will finish the implementation of the study for those several individuals, uh, and that will be their starting point for this year. So if, if somebody was tapped last year when we implemented, we will finish that implementation as part of this year's budget as well.
So, Michael, I know Ashley's in the room, so I'm gonna ask her, but with regard to the cap, I thought the reason there was a cap was because they were at the very highest step or range of the, no?
No, there was a cap to try to, sorry, there was a cap to, I guess, phase it in or to help control some of the costs through the first implementation, so I think we capped department heads at 10%, and everyone else, we capped at 15%. So if their, if their recommended raise was more than 15%, they only got 15% of it, and then the second phase of it would have been for this year.
Okay. And is COLA-
That's correct.
There's some individuals that still just need their back, their phase two, if you will.
Uh-huh, and is COLA, what is COLA running, 5.6%?
I think Michael said that most of the localities are doing anywhere from 5 to 7.
No, my point is, like, when I write a contract for hospital software, right now, we say, oh, every year, we're gonna increase the rate that you're gonna pay us by COLA, or sometimes they'll cap it. A lot of companies cap us at 3%, which is kinda cheap, but COLA, right now, according to my contracts person, is like 5.5, 5.69%. So cost of living adjustment is over what we're even saying we're gonna propose. My point is, I'm comfortable with that, because I know that COLA is even higher than what you're proposing, and I don't wanna get out of market again.
Well, I will tell you, from management's perspective, I have no issue going above that to keep in line with COLA. That was just our starting point, but we don't have any predetermined or preset annual COLA raises, we just generally are keeping up with the market as we go, so that is something by all means that council can discuss.
I'm good with 5, if it is in line with other localities. I was just making kind of a point, if any of you were like, huh, 5% is a lot, I'm making a point that the cost of living is actually more, the adjustment.
I do like the idea we have 5 to 7, we can, we can look at that.
And that figures into the decision as far as the real estate taxes.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, what were you just referring to? 5 to 7%? Was there a range?
Yeah, it was a range, they gave that twice. Michael talked about it.
So I think when Michael meets with the CAOs of the varying localities, regionally, they have those discussions, and it ran the gamut, anywhere from 5 to 7, is where I think that was coming from.
Okay.
That's correct.
I missed that, 'cause I was going by what he had written. He had written 5%. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we have invoices over $20,000 requiring council authorization. We have Draper Aiden Associates, $24,900, and this is for the lake dam alternative analysis. Anybody have any questions on that? Jack, you wanna speak about that?
No, sir.
Okay, the second one is Knights Exteriors, this is Smithville Deck, Smithville Center Deck, improvements, and if you've not looked outside and seen that, it is very, very well done. I watched it in progress and did a great job, really did. I think Amy must have cracked the whip on you, for sure. Did a good job, $66,000, $566,387. Moving this to council for consideration.
All right, Parks and Recreation Committee, members Roundtree, Butler, and Brooks. Is Roundtree?
Yes, just got, sorry, I thought we had the dam presentation before, oh, no, Parks Rec, then Public Works, okay, great. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. I just didn't wanna skip a month for Parks and Rec, and I had, I wanted to, Amy, allow you the opportunity to talk to council about what's going on in Parks and Rec, any issues that you have or opportunities, and then also just kind of make a plea to every month, keep Parks and Rec issues in front of us. You know, given what our Vision 2035 statement is, as I read that, I thought, wow, it really highlights Parks and Rec and the amenities and the things that we're doing for our citizens, and if in fact, you know, I know we're tabling it for July, but just looking long-term, if in fact, that's our goal, if you aim at nothing, you're sure to hit it, right? So I wanna make sure on a monthly basis that we're talking about these things that we intend to hit, right? And those things include, you know, walking trails, so a discussion on park-to-park, not that we have to do that tonight, but also includes a discussion if we're gonna have a modern sportsplex in the corridor entering into town. I think modern also suggests that we know that exactly, we need to, you know, resume that study and figure out what ALL can and needs to go there, you know, whether that's getting active on a citizen survey and figuring out what they want, you know, like, kinda like we did with the Long Leaf Pine Project, and considering what we wanted to do with that property, I just think we need to keep it out of the forefront. When I spoke to Michael earlier today about the Luder Sportsplex and what ALL was gonna go there in that study, he said that had been kinda tabled. When we lost our unanimous, or anonymous, excuse me, unanimous, when we lost our anonymous donor to that, then we kinda tabled that for a while, but I do think we should push forward with that and really figure out, again, if it is modern and it is state-of-the-art, let's figure out exactly what it wants to be when it grows up, you know, the sportsplex. I also, in listening to the people from the Baseball and Softball League, to hear them talk about a national softball tournament happening here this summer, I think it's a great opportunity to survey, talk to, wow, all of the above, all these people that are coming to town. So I really would like to have discussion about how we capture those people, their dollars, their opinions, what they think of town, why they come here, what the economic impact is, and June is gonna be coming, like, it's staring us like a freight train, right? 'Cause it's the end of April right now, so we have to keep that in mind, and I'm happy to talk to you offline about that and strategize how to get some of that done. Amy, I just don't wanna lose the opportunity with those folks. I also want to, on a monthly basis, if we're gonna say, hey, Vision 2035 is to really make sure we have great programming for seniors, I think we need to talk about that, what ALL has done for seniors, what's the inventory, what's the impact, you know, and strategically, how we move all of those things forward. Obviously, next month, I do wanna talk, I wanna hear from Judy about where the revenue from street closures go and how it can support town outlays. You know, those are just some of the things, and again, we're two and a half hours into this thing tonight, and there's been a lot on the agenda, but I don't wanna see Parks and Rec not happen, 'cause I think it's too important, I mean, the committee, I know you're doing lots of work, but I wanna have the committee meeting, I wanna make sure that we have some of these things I just mentioned every month that we just talk about. And I hadn't heard anything lately, maybe that's my fault, I know I missed a meeting last week on the Long Leaf Pine Project, so if there's anything new that came out of that in the meeting, I think with ODU and/or with the automated kayak rental launch idea, kinda where my head's at, so just looking for your input and to, you know, update council on any of that, all of the above.
All right, I'll start with the Long Leaf Pine meeting that we had with Old Dominion University last week. Henry McBurney has, of course, led the charge with all the long-leaf demonstration area that we now have at Windsor Castle Park, which is over nine acres and thousands of trees in all different states of growth, and some are maintained with grass cut underneath them, and then some will be part of a prescribed burn. But Henry's concern is, is this is his legacy, and he's not gonna be here forever, you know, we probably only have him for another 30 or 40 years. So he wants some follow-throughs. So he reached out to Old Dominion University, who already manages the Blackwater Long Leaf Pine area, and he was hoping that their research program would take interest in it and use it as their field study, and can do different things with it, and it would be beneficial to both, 'cause we would have a group telling us, now it's time to do prescribed burns, now it's time to budget to do this particular type of understory for the plants, which, of course, nobody on my staff knows anything about, 'cause it's so specialized. So Dr. Flanders, representative of Old Dominion University, and he loves long-leaf pines, just like Mr. McBurney, and so he talked about that for most of the time, but Michael and I kept circling back to, okay, what do we need to do to make this happen, to make it a formal partnership? So he's taken it back to his dean, and he said she definitely would like this, and this is what she's been looking for, so I think it's a positive, and hopefully, we'll hear back from them soon, and I'll stay on it and make sure communication does it in there. The kayak self-service kiosk, unfortunately, probably won't come to us until June, but that's a great time of year to open, 'cause the water temps are warm. Opening in May has always been a little bit of cold temps, and that's not what you want with people just learning to kayak or doing it for the first or second time. So that will go in in June, and it'll be ready for use as soon as it's installed, so.
So we voted to-
You did.
Go that way?
You did, yep, and we did the five-year contract for that, so that's all in process. And then we have a nurse practitioner in our local area, and she wants to start a walk with a doc program. The closest one is currently in Williamsburg, and the way it works is, once a month, one of our local doctors or physicians will do, like, a little 20-minute seminar on, you know, current health topics, and then you just, you walk the trails with this person and can ask them anything, and talk to them, and get out and exercise, so.
That sounds fun.
Hey, with the small.
Steve's not signing up, 'cause he has a bad knee.
I might need to be walking with a doc period, so anyway.
So the program doesn't cost anything to participants, it will cost her $650 to start it, and of course, it's a national program, already has all its framework in place, and all its insurance liabilities and all that, so she may come to council to seek partial funding of that, just to see if council is interested in supporting it. But either way, it's going forward, and she's determined to do it, and it'll probably start in July. So those are the current topics I can think of today.
So you and I can take this softball tournament offline and then brainstorm what we can do?
Absolutely, and tourism's always been great to work with when we have tournaments, they provide links and stuff, to provide emails to participants, and then they have signage out there that directs people to downtown to eat and drink and shop.
And then I understand the Luder Sportsplex study is something that maybe you put on your objectives list to support our vision?
I did, and, but I wanted to look at it from holistic parks and not just do the one park, 'cause I think Windsor Castle needs a vision plan as well, or master plan.
Thank you. All right, any questions, Frank? Thank you.
All right, now we're at Public Works, members Mr. Brooks, Smith, and Roundtree.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I get the opportunity to introduce this dam project.
Won't be the first one.
Which I'm actually looking forward to. I've read in detail the, what's been, what's being laid out and explained to us, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jack.
Yes, sir, test, you'll find a copy of the most recent Alternatives Evaluation on the Waterworks Dam Project. The evaluation looked at rehabilitation as well as decommissioning options. The largest unknown in evaluating the options is the potential lake bed restoration if we were to decommission the dam, and that's largely, largely contingent on how well the lake bed naturally restores itself, or if we have to do any work to it. Mr. Dean is back to give us a little, little more information, and as well as joining us remote is Gannett Fleming, who did the report.
No, correction. Again, Tim Dean, TRC, with me on the Teams channel, I've got Sean McGee and Melinda Lin, they're two of our in-house experts when it comes to dams and engineering for dams. When we initially started this project, several years ago, it was prior to the Riddick, TRC Berger, and Riddick Ray did not have the dam expertise in-house, and so we work with Gannett Fleming, who does have that. They prepared this initial Alternatives Analysis, and I've since shared with Sean and Melinda to get their feedback and their insight, and I asked them to join us for this, because they can certainly answer questions regarding the dam far better than I can. So with that, I'll introduce them as well.
Can y'all hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
So Jeff, this reads like, to me, someone who's, I have a master's degree in healthcare, but this reads to me like a Latin textbook, like, I never took Latin. It was very hard for me to understand what it was you were trying to get to, so perhaps a Cliff's Notes version from the experts as to what each of the four alternatives is in, like, layman's terms, so that I can understand what's going on here.
I'll try to give you my layman's perspective.
Okay.
Again, some of the history maybe helps. Back in 2013, DCR, who handles dam safety regulation across the state of Virginia, they had the regulations changed, and this dam fell into a category of a high-hazard dam because of downstream impacts and such to potential homeowners or other factors that play into it. And so in doing so, the dam needs to be brought up into a regular certification. It currently is not, it's a-
It's conditional.
Conditional.
And is there any way to appeal that?
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge. It essentially comes down to, you know, DCR, who regulates dams, saying it needs to comply.
Okay.
And so from that, this Alternatives Analysis came up with different ways that the dam could, one, either be brought into compliance, or take the dam out of commission, and it no longer serves as a dam.
And then we studied it in 2020, right?
Yes.
And at that time, the alternatives were what?
Kind of along the same lines as what we're looking at now.
And I think what we had several months ago, Mr. Roundtree, y'all had requested, we had given y'all the options of either mainly closing the dam down, or in the cost, rough cost on how much that would cost versus keeping the dam, and we didn't have a cost at the present time as to what the cost to continue to keep the dam would be, and that's what developed, this is what developed this particular study that we've got now. Now we have a cost analysis that we can present to you, either keeping the dam, or if you do choose to keep the dam, bring it up to current requirements to the regular certification, and/or if you still choose to abandon the dam.
So is there any scenario out of these four that keeps the lake intact and the road?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And which one is that?
There's a couple of them that I-
Okay. Can you just go through that, then, the alternatives?
Sean, do you wanna hit this?
Yeah, so there are, there's three alternatives. Alternatives 1 and 2 are very similar, so what, as Tim was saying, the regulated dams are regulated by the DCR, they need to pass a certain storm event, and based on the classification of your dam, that sets the type of storm event and how much water that it needs to pass. So alternatives 1 and 2 are for rehabilitating the dam, to comply with dam regulation, so it would be, those two alternatives would include removing the existing pipes that are there and installing larger box culverts, 'cause currently, those pipes do not pass that storm event, so you have to have larger pipes there in order to allow water to pass through the dam. So that, alternatives 1 and 2 would be for the, would be maintaining the dam, keeping the dam, keeping the pond, but that would require replacing the, those existing pipes or some larger pipes.
And you've estimated two diameters of pipe, a 4.7 and an 8.5? Table 2?
Yeah, Gannett Fleming?
Just-
Yes. Yeah, Gannett Fleming, that's what they estimated, yeah, alternative 1 was $4.9 million, and then alternative 2 was $5.5 million. And they also provided, I guess that, it's a, I guess they called it 2B, that would be the $5.9 million, that would be going on the conservative side on allowing more water to pass through it, so alternative 1 is for hydro, it's called a hydro- So alternative one is for hydro, it's called a hydro turf. It's basically a synthetic turf. It's like astroturf, I guess you could kind of think of it. And then alternative two would then be the articulated concrete block, which I don't know if you guys have seen those. But they're basically, they're basically, they're big blocks, concrete blocks that are tied together with cables. And it has openings in between the blocks. So it allows grass to grow through. It looks a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, a little bit more natural. But the hydro turf, that's kind of new technology. My understanding, it's been used a couple of times in the state, but the state does allow that. But those are just two options that were presented.
So you said hydro turf is an alternative one and the block is alternative two?
Correct.
Because that's not what our report shows in the packet? It's the opposite.
Oh, I'm sorry, flip those. Alternative one, yeah, they had the table flipped. Alternative one is the ACB, the articulated block. And alternative two is the hydro turf. Sorry about that.
So alternative one is the block. Alternative two is maybe something newish, which is the hydro turf. So my question had to do with page four, table two, the summary of costs. One elicits like a two different type of PMF ACB protection, 4.7 inches and 8.5. What's the difference between those two?
Different sized block.
Yes.
And that's just aesthetically more pleasing or not or?
Yeah, it's the, the difference between the two is they're just larger blocks. It would provide more erosion protection.
More erosion protection.
So yes, so both of those, both of those on this table two, on page four, both of those are for the articulated block, just one just larger than the other. And both of them, they have the openings, they allow grass to grow through it. But the second one, though, more expensive, it's just a larger block.
And then guards against erosion better?
Correct. Yeah.
So we have to decide if it's $400,000 better or not? Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So alternative one keeps the citizens in that, in the outlying areas able to still drive over it, right, Wayne? Keeps the road?
And either, and either one of the alternatives is here, the road will always stay intact. The one option that I had given y'all a couple of years ago, I guess when we were initially talking about this, was one of the outlying options is we could just completely abandon the road there and just abandon the dam. But I don't think we need to go that way. I think we need to maintain the road across the dam. Of what would become if the lake is drained, so to speak, it would become an embankment. Effectively is what it would be, the dam, so to speak, in a sense, would so to speak be there. But the lake would no longer be there. When the lake is no longer there, it's no longer considered, the embankment's no longer considered a dam. And so that would make a big difference because VDOT obviously would take maintenance over of the road. Well, it maintains the road already, a portion of the road. But it would also maintain the embankment area itself too, as part of the structural integrity of the road system that runs across it.
So doing away with the road really doesn't help us? It doesn't make the mitigation cheaper?
If you did away with the road, and Tim, and y'all could correct me on this, but if you did away with the road, it would change the classification of the dam from no longer, I forget what the hazard is, if the hazard is on it, it would decrease the dam. But you still would have the dam. You still have the responsibility, the town would still have the responsibility of a dam.
But it doesn't make it a high hazard dam anymore if it's not a road?
I think it would lower the hazard classification, yes, ma'am.
No, I don't know.
So that option isn't one of these alternatives?
No.
This particular iteration, we weren't directed to consider that as an option.
The impression that we were getting, that I was receiving is that y'all wanted to maintain the road across there so you'd have access from the county, the county residents would have access, easy access. We get about 14, I think it's around the last count, I heard it's about 1,400 trips a day through there. So it's fairly easy.
I mean, my point is just if, you're talking about $5 million. Think you gotta look at everything, right? You don't want to do away with a natural resource, but, and, you don't want to do away with a natural resource. And if there's, you know, another way to do that, I just want to make sure we look at it. So, what was your name again? Sorry. Sean?
Yeah, Sean McGee.
Sean, so, sorry. If, so alternative one and two are basically fix the dam, bring it up to standard, keep it a road, keep it a lake, right?
Correct.
And then alternative, what was the next one? Three?
Yes, that would be complete, that would be decommissioning of the dam.
Decommissioning the dam?
Yes, so.
And if you decommission the dam, you're draining it?
Yeah, the pipe, the pipes would be removed and replaced with a large box culvert. So there no longer would be water impounded and that stream would need to be restored back to its original condition. So they would function as it did prior to the dam being installed. So then it would not, it would be exempt from dam regulations. And it would basically treated as any normal creek flowing under a road.
But we'd still have to keep it up some way because people are driving over it?
We would maintain, we maintain a portion of the road over the dam because of the town limits. Town limits sign is if you ride, you know, ride down and you see a town limit. So we maintain Waterworks Road from Courthouse down to that particular sign. VDOT picks up the maintenance of the road from that sign on out of the county.
So the decommissioning option could cost us as much as 9.2 million? Sean?
Yeah, correct, yes. I think that's the high end.
Right.
Pretty high.
Okay, so in your opinion, I know I didn't pay you for this part and check's in the mail for the other part, sorry. We just approved it, you saw, we just approved it tonight. But if there was a fourth option, what, you know, in your best guess, like even a wag, is that cheaper, like to downgrade the dam and do away with the road and just keep the lake?
Um.
Huh?
You're still dealing with the dam.
Yeah, right. But if you're not driving over it, then it's not as high of a classification.
If it fails, it fails.
You still have to do all the work to, you still have to stabilize the dam.
Yeah.
So there's no less, that's what I'm asking him. Is there any less work for an alternative that included closing the road?
Yeah, you wouldn't have to replace the road. I think it would be less than alternative, alternatives one and two. I'm just, just a guess. It would be, it would be less because you're not having to restore the road then. You wouldn't have to, you still have to allow water to pass through it. But it wouldn't have, the pipes that you'd have to install wouldn't have to be as big. And that, those, the structures where they're using the hydro turf and the articulated block wouldn't have to be as big and bulky. So you'd probably save a little bit of money there too.
So the way this all started was the new regulations came into play and we had to do something. And so we started, the whole idea about decommissioning wasn't even on the table. Except we got these huge cost estimates. Everybody goes, well, wow, let's just do away with the dam. Well, at one point, they thought that was going to be a less expensive option. Now it's twice as much, which is eye popping.
Well, if we would have done it in 2020, not that I'm in favor of it because I'm not. But if we would have done it in 2020, Michael had a grant that was going to cover pretty much the whole amount of the restoration of the lake bed. And it was some kind of time limited, y'all remember that?
It was, yeah.
Some kind of time limited thing that was going to basically pay for that. And that's why that was a legitimate option or not.
Or grant options, actually to decommission rather than maintain. It's hard to be one, the dam's decommissioned, not to keep it.
So there still are grant options to do that? Actually, I think Dr. Braden found it for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not remembering that wrong.
But they're more susceptible to decommissioning dams than maintaining, right?
Correct.
And that's EPA or who is that?
DCR.
DCR.
Question, Mr. Trump? I read the introduction of the report, based on previous analyses. Who conducted these analyses?
To be honest, I don't know. I know we've been working with Gannett Fleming for many years, you know, throughout the history of all of the evolutions of things, with the studies and inspections and other tasks and stuff that are associated with it. But I honestly, I don't know.
Well, ask Sean.
He wouldn't know.
He wouldn't know? How did he base his analysis on previous analyses?
Sean didn't write this report. Gannett Fleming is a consultant that wrote this. Sean is a TRC employee that has dam expertise. So I asked him to, you know, again, not being a dam engineer, I asked him to review this. Does it make sense logically, you know, to be able to support, try to answer your questions?
But we don't, the point that I'm trying to make is a lot of times we can take things, please don't take things for granted. Like who made the analysis that determined that this dam, has DCR been down on site and said this? Somebody from Richmond, somebody, or an engineer from DCR, been down and said, this dam is exactly what's being alluded to as far as the classification is concerned? Do we have a report from DCR that somebody was on site, has examined the dam and said with reasonable certainty that this is what it is?
Yeah, the DCR should have that report because they're the ones that make that determination on what hazard class dams are. So they were involved in that process when it was originally completed. So there should be something on files.
Well, I'd like to see that before we start throwing out 5.5 to 9 million dollars, I'd like to see a report from DCR that says, and I would have thought maybe that, that that would have been a part of an appendix to this very, as Ms. Roundtree pointed out, very, very composite report that's technical in nature. I'm not, I'm not out. The other question is, are there experts out there other than DCR or Gannett Fleming that could come in and give us an alternative evaluation that says it's not as bad as it appears to be? I just want to make sure that before we start putting the pen to paper as far as writing a check for as much money as that is, I'd like to have something that says it is what it is and what we're dealing with. Not, I'm not disputing anyone whatsoever. But I think just to do due diligence, you need to know for sure that it is what it is. The other question is this, I mean, that's a lot of money for a small town. That is a significant, and that money that you were talking about as far as remediation is concerned, that's kind of like when you drain that, it's like buying a pig in a poke. You don't really exactly know until all, and you correct me if I'm wrong, until all that drainage is gone, everything is done, that amount for remediation is at best an educated guess, at worst, a swag. Because I've dealt with environmental things before and I know how they can get really expensive in a hurry, even when you've done the very best science on it. Sometimes it does do that. And my last question or concern is, what if, what if we don't do anything at this juncture? It's conditional. How long is the condition for? Is there something, do we have a letter that says somewhere, Wayne or Jack or whatever, that says, okay, it's conditional, but this is a sort of Damocles over your head. If you don't get this done by a certain period of time, we're going to issue a consent order or a, whatever the legal term is, to make you do it. And if we can't afford to do it, how are they going to make still?
Well, I don't know the actual teeth that DCR has at this point. We keep getting conditional permits to keep it as is. I would add that it is a liability to staff in a storm event. We have to put people down there to maintain to the dam. And at a certain point, we have to close the road. And from what I understand, and I'm not an expert either, but the hazard of the dam is if the dam was to fail, it could potentially damage people, you know, life and property. And so that's why it has to be built to a certain point. Again, they keep giving us conditional permits, you know, with the understanding that we will bring it up to regulation. But I don't know, and we can find out, I don't know what teeth they have.
Do we have to bring it up to regulation or we have to keep examining and evaluating what we're doing? There's two different things. I mean, to bring it up, or what have we told them that we are going to do that triggers that conditional report?
Well, to be honest, at some point, we told them we were going to decommission it. And then it was the decision to go back and reevaluate the options. And that's where we were at the grant phase and everything else back in 2020.
Yeah, we changed our mind. We voted to decommission it and we changed our mind.
So we're going back and going through the process.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go back through my records. I've got some documentation and everything. I've been working on this for about 20 years.
I'm sure you have.
Let me go back and see what I can find for you, if you want me with me or something.
I want to relook at the September 25th, 2020 report too, that they referenced in this report.
The thing I, one thing I don't think I've ever seen, and I've been here the whole time, not since it was built, but.
Pretty close.
Pretty close. The problem is, has DCR or anyone ever, anyone else ever modeled what would happen if the dam failed? Because it might just get real wet and strange. I mean, I know there were, are there any houses that are indirect?
No, no, there's no, there's no, no, no direct house.
Okay, so.
The modeling that comes out.
What would happen?
Is that at the, at full, at full flow, when it full flow, if it completely inundates, that it would flood the area down in it. The good part about it is there is no houses at this moment or homes that are in danger. Down at Mill Swamp Road.
There's a bridge.
There's a bridge down there that the water would rise about a foot or so above normal on a temporary basis. We were concerned, I was concerned that if it did flood, that it might endanger that bridge down there. And you'd have traffic going across it, not only, so if it, if it overtopped at the dam there, obviously if you got somebody going across it and it overtops, you got a loss of life.
Well, wouldn't you?
But if you got down at the bottom of Mill Swamp Road, if it overtopped in conjunction with that, you also could have a possibility.
But if you, you would know, you would know that you're in the middle of an extreme weather event and you just closed both bridges.
Yeah, it's like a hurricane when the wind picks up. Close the dam, true, right.
No, you absolutely can. And my responsibility is, as part of the emergency action plan is, is I have to have people go down there and check it and see what the water level is. Once it gets to a particular level there, then I have the authority to let Michael know that we've got, and let VDOT know, we got to let the police department know to come down there. And the public works department has to come down there and shut the road down.
We've done it.
I know, but here's the other thing. The whole, the reason this thing has gotten to be, the state keeps moving the goalposts because we've spent money after money after money. Trying, and they'd say, if you just do this, you'll be okay. And then if you just do this, that wasn't good enough. So if you just do this, it'll be okay. And they keep moving the goalposts.
I've seen it at the general assembly when they were moving that goalpost.
It's gotten to the point where.
It's very frustrating.
It's extremely frustrating. And that's where this current discussion came to a head. What do you do? And the question I need, I think you need to ask these guys, is if you spend 5.8 million dollars and you put in the Cadillac version of the.
How long is that going to last?
Is that, yeah, how long is that going to last?
It's not just last as far as tangibly, but how long is that going to satisfy that regulation before they do it again?
Exactly.
Which is why I think at this point, I'd like to see those reports. I'm just not in the, I don't mean it the wrong way, but as you said, Mr. Reddick, until we get some finality or definitive, I mean, yeah, the dam could wash out with one car on that dam at that time. But, okay, what's the likelihood? And then the modeling that you bring, you know, as far as, as it goes and dissipates as it goes downstream, how much wave energy, how much actual, whatever the energy is called, you know, hydraulic energy? you know, hydraulic energy is going to then impact that bridge that's downstream to cause a car to, I mean, it's a lot of things, there's a whole lot of moving parts to this thing before I say, let's stroke a check for 4.5.
It's $9 million to make sure something doesn't happen that's not likely to happen.
And I can find out. Go ahead, sir.
So, so part of the, that process where you, where dam owners work with the DCR on the hazard classification, part of that process is doing a dam breach analysis. So you do look at that hydraulic modeling and if there's a dam, a breach, that where does the water flow and how, how fast does it flow, how high does it flow? And that's used to determining what classification the hazard class is for the dam. And you guys, so your dam, it's a significant, so it's in the middle of the road, so there's the high haz, significant haz and low hazard, you're significant, so that's, that's right in the middle. And because you have a potential loss of life that, and so for significant hazard potential, you get to have either a likely that a loss of life could happen or if you, it could, in the event of a dam failure, if it could damage like high volume traffic or, or municipal public roads, which, so I, I think it does look at, because it's a public road and if there's a car on there, that there could potentially be a loss of life, although it's very small, it could potentially happen.
So that was my point, couldn't you appeal it, right? Like we're at a significant level, but if we promise to always close the road once it's a certain level or whatever, then could we be downgraded to a lower? No?
Yeah, so the hazard class looks at three things, looks at the volume, the, the height of the dam, and then also the downstream hazards. And we've already talked about the downstream hazards. And you look at those three things and it makes a determination, out of those three, whatever, which of those three is the highest class, so, so like a high class, it's 25 feet or greater, so, you know, regardless if there's no ha, loss of life downstream or if it's less than the, you know, a certain volume requirement, it's still kicked up in that high haz. So in order to get down to the low haz, you'd probably have to remove the road and then lower the dam, which means that the, the lake is going to shrink in size, but, I mean, that's something we could, we could look at, you know, how much it would shrink.
Mr. Chairman?
You also brought up, you also brought up about the cost, like the environmental cost, I mean, that's surely something we'd have to look at. There's over 100 years of sediment that's built up behind that dam, so we'd have to look at the sediment behind it and how that needs to be managed, you know, regardless of which alternative, that's something that has to be looked at.
As a follow-up, do we know how many of these dams are similarly situated in the Commonwealth of Virginia? And if so, what, what actions, does anybody know what actions DCR is taking from an enforcement perspective? And have they, have they taken localities to court for failing to comply with, with, with these directives? And again, back to Mr. Riddick's point, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but you know, the term arbitrary and capricious and things like that come to mind that, you know, where, where do you get the idea that this specific dam, based on the way that it's designed, warrants an adjustment of this magnitude at this time? I mean, I'd, I'd like to, I think that would be an interesting thing to find out as well. What's, what's DCR really doing from an enforcement perspective? And I don't want to pull their tail with this and make it, make us a, a test case, but at the same time, I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm just not, it hadn't been proven to me with reasonable certainty that we're at a point where we got to up and, and spend 5.5 to 10 million dollars on this. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to know what's going on in the real world.
Right, you, you guys are in, in the same boat with a lot of, of public entities that, that own dams, that they're just, they're old dams, they're, they're no longer have a function, and it's really used for recreational and it falls out of compliance because it doesn't meet current dam regulations specifically with, like you guys are looking at with, with the, being able to pass a design storm event. So the, in my experience, the DCR, you guys are significant, it's not, if you were a high haz, we'd probably be having a different conversation and probably be getting much more pressure from the DCR, but being a significant haz, again, kind of that middle of the road, you're probably on their radar, but they can certainly take enforcement action. That, that happens over years of being non-responsive and not working at all with the DCR, but it sounds like you guys are at least engaging the DCR and talking with them. So as long as something's moving forward, they seem to be a little bit more patient with dam owners because they, they understand that this dam's not generating any revenue and that the, I mean, this is just money that's coming out of the, the funds from the, from the public, so they, they, they understand that, they get that.
Thank you, sir.
But unless if, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly. Any other further comments, questions?
So are we clear on what we're asking for as far as next steps? Wayne, you have some action items, I think? Right, next steps?
I'll just, I'll see if I can find the, look up the reports and everything that I've got. I think Draper Aiden's got some previous studies that they've helped me with in the past and I'll see how to put all that documentation together, Sean.
And, and if I could just, one, the gentleman made another point about if this dam had been at another level and it was something with reasonable certainty that we knew as human beings, I mean, we were not, we're, that it was a definitive hazard at this instant moment of killing people downstream, I don't think it'd be anything, but we would be pursuing the funds, we'd be doing whatever we needed to do to mitigate this and, and, and preserve the health and safety of, of anyone. I mean, we don't, we don't want that, but like I said before, I'm just, I'm not there yet.
I don't think any of us are. All right, anything further? With that, that concludes the, the public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of additional items unless I've got, I guess I've got the latest and greatest, right?
Yes.
Approve?
That's it.
Approvals?
The minutes will be at council.
Yeah. Anything else to come before committee? Thank y'all very much for your patience. Thank you for the information, we really do appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for coming this evening. Meeting adjourned.
All right.
So will you, do you think we should do two meetings in May?
I'm sorry?
Don't you think we should do two meetings in May?
I mean.
Two committee meetings, no? I mean, like three hours and 20 minutes?